Seven eighteen, at this time I call the Monday, June sixth, twenty twenty-two Board, Select Board meeting to order, and we'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a handful of announcements and board openings. We have one opening for a Board of Realtor member for the Historic District Commission, one opening on the Capitol Committee, two openings on the Council on Aging, two openings on the Conservation Commission, one opening on the Board of Health, one opening on the Affordable Housing Trust, one opening on the Hamilton Housing Authority, two openings, Housing Authority and an at-large member for the Human Rights Commission, and one opening for a Hamilton resident on the Recreation Committee. If you are interested in any of the boards or committees, please go to the website and fill out a volunteer form. And at this point, we have public comment, so for three minutes on anything that is not already on the agenda, if you wish to speak, you can come right up to the podium, or if you're on the Zoom, you can raise your hand, and you have three minutes to speak.
Someone's telling me they don't have audio on the Zoom.
Oh?
I'm asking someone else. She's on Zoom, but no audio. Ask the audience if they can hear us.
Noah?
People shaking their head.
No?
We're getting no, shaking no heads.
Put something in the chat, maybe, and see if people can...
I turned the chats off.
Do you want me to just...
Because these mics are working, the mics are working in here.
Or...
Check, check, check.
You have audio on this end.
Or audio on this end, it's just the Zoom end? People in person pause?
Is this from what we did yesterday? Is it your computer that's...
No, because it's not hooked up to his computer.
No. Usually once a H W camera's hooked up, they should be able to hear it.
I just turned it up on the computer, so maybe they'll be able to hear now.
Can you hear us now, folks?
Can you hear us at home, folks?
Still seeing head shaking now.
Nope.
If you turn your mic on, Joe, it'll go crazy.
I believe so. Can you hear me now? Can people hear that?
I saw a nod.
Can you guys hear that?
Amy Wallach, can you hear that?
Give you a thumbs up.
Okay. We just needed a verification there.
There we go.
Let's hope that this doesn't start to go wonky with the audio.
I just warn everybody that we're an audio.
If we start to get feedback, I'm going to have to turn my mic off, so...
Yeah, well, we'll do our best here with our technical difficulties, but hopefully everyone at home can hear. We've opened the meeting, we've done our Pledge of Allegiance, we've read our Board and Committee openings, and now we're at the public comment phase, and we have somebody at our podium that wishes to speak. Yes, sir?
Hi, good evening. Sandy Coddling, one twenty-one Chabaco Road, and Conservation Commissioner. I just want to say a couple of things that are going to be a little out of context to some. Number one, I've only worked with George for about six months, but I found his knowledge to be really invaluable, so I'm really sorry to see him go, as I can tell you are as well. I know he's been devoted to the Commission for a long time. I was a little confused about the comments that the Commission had been consulted and said that we did not authorize him. Nobody asked me. It is true, we didn't discuss it, but nobody asked me. We're pretty short-staffed, Brian's part-time. I feel that whenever I drive around town, I'm always looking, so I would have said, I do think that it's our job to be aware of what's going on and whether our conditions are being met. Now, going on land without permission, I understand that's a different issue and certainly wouldn't support trespassing, but I think, as a Commission, we need to be out with our eyes open, because that's the only way that we're going to detect problems in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy, and we won't get into too much, because it's just a public comment section, but I wholeheartedly agree with you. Part of it is, you know, eyes on what's going on, but the proper process, really.
Virginia Cookson, three eighteen Forest Street, and yeah, I'm a Commission, Conservation Commissioner. I tried to talk to our lawyer as he left, but he was quite busy, so he couldn't. But my question to him, and perhaps you know it, or you can find out, and I can see you later. First, the very first time I did any work for the Commission was around Memorial Day weekend that I joined, and there was a big noise of an earth mover. I live on six hundred feet from the other side of the lake, and this came from the opposite, and I could hear them really loud, and then some people made some calls and stuff. So I wasn't about to go on Mr. Derry, I don't know if any of you remember Bill Derry, but his reputation at the time was that he built bombs, so, you know, I figured this is a serious person, so I called the policeman, and one of the policemen met me at the boat ramp, and we went in to give a, you know, cease the distress, to see what was happening. I mean, you know, so it's possible that you get there and find that really nothing happening, and so you just don't go really nearly passing out. The reason I wanted to bring that up is, I figured if it's illegal to pass in people's property, even though they have a filing, the filing is live, and yes, we have always had, and it's basically one of the general conditions that are put on the form by the state, that says that, yes, you know, as long as the filing is active, you know, before you can, before it's finished, then you can check the land to see if they're doing things right, or you can check the land if there's a complaint, or you think there might be a problem, you're allowed to do that, and you don't, you don't ask the patient, I'm not sure, I wasn't in hospital, sorry, not patient, but you don't have to ask the homeowner, because it's already there and writing, and they've been with us, had a couple of meetings and stuff, and we've been out on our sidewalks. So I was surprised, it was a few weeks ago, that I got a copy of his letter to your folks explaining the law, and I read the whole thing, and it was straightforward, and it was just the two things on it that he said, but I thought, how could what I did with the policeman, that would be illegal, and how can we check that people are doing it the way it's supposed to, if we can't go in the land unless we always call them up and ask them? Because we go in sidewalks, the former sidewalks we always make, we always call up, and because we want them there, so we can ask questions back and forth, and, you know, have to make things last longer, okay? So I was very interested, and it upsets me a bit that we are restricted from it when you have an open file that's actually in process. Now, granted, they haven't put a pitchfork in the ground, but once they've filed with us, yeah, we're supposed to be able to look around, which we did, you know, the portion that was relevant to us to get out of the filing. So those are the two things I wanted to bring up, but I was so hoping the lawyer would still be here, you know, because if the law has just gotten stricter and stricter, or perhaps maybe the law's been made more clarified over time, then the state has a problem as well as we do, as far as following a condition like that. So that's all, I just wanted you folks to know what has been my experience and what it was based on, okay?
Thank you, Virginia. All right, I don't see any... Tosh?
Tosh Blake, Sagamore Street. This relates, just only tangentially, to an agenda item coming up this evening, but I think it's separate enough that I'd want to bring it up here. It's about flag requests.
Sure.
Not about flag policy, per se. Just, I guess, as a reminder to the Board, I don't know what, if you're going to change your policy in the future, but I still have a standing request for the gas and flag for July, so I don't know what's going to happen tonight with votes or anything. And also, for August, I'd like to formally request commemoration of the historic first straight pride parade in Boston, which was held in August twenty nineteen. I'd like to see, request a straight pride, a straight pride flag fly in August for the entire month from a Town Hall flagpole in Patton Park. So it's a formal request, just like to have on the record, and that may have some impact on your discussion tonight, I have no idea, but I'd like to put that in there. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tosh. All right, I don't see any hands raised online, if you can hear me. Thanks for commenting, folks. Thanks, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy.
All right. Select Board members and Town Manager reports. Let's go around the horn here. Caroline, anything for tonight?
Only update, I did speak to David Smith from Board of Health, and he just wanted me to mention that there's been questions about whether or not there would be a change to the Town Advisory to wear masks in public spaces, the recommendation to wear masks in public spaces. There's been no change to that recommendation, they're not going to update it, it just stands as it was last August, it's still sort of due to the, sort of, multiple things that go into making or changing a decision like that, they're just going to let the Advisory stand for now.
All right, Jamie?
Just briefly, tomorrow morning, I'll be going to, I guess, the groundbreaking ceremony for the Habitat for Humanity Affordable Housing Project on Asbury Street, so exciting moment for our town, and that, and along with the Willow Flats, which I'll, I'm sure Rick Mitchell will make as part of his report, is we've got some affordable housing coming down the pike in Hamilton.
All right. Bill, anything for me?
I'm not at it right now.
Tom?
Nothing for me tonight, thanks.
Myself, we had, as the Select Board, we met on Sunday for some goal-setting for ourselves and Joe for the year, so look to that, at an upcoming agenda. We talked kind of a lot of big picture stuff, and then got granular with it, so a lot of kind of good things to come. And then I have a CPC meeting on Thursday night at seven PM, so if you're interested, you can join by Zoom, and that's, I think, all I have for today. Joe?
You'll get your, you'll get my Town Edge reports tomorrow, I apologize, I didn't get them out in the email today, had, we're circling back to a couple of Department Heads to get them finished, so I will, I'll let you be surprised when you get them, and we'll go into it now.
We have a lengthy agenda, and I don't want to hold up the folks that came here to participate.
All right, so we are, we're actually not too far off, believe it or not.
I'm hearing someone on Zoom that the audio is a little not great, so maybe people will need some...
It's not the mics.
I think it's because it's only coming from Joe's computer.
Coming through the computer, so, yeah.
Figure out why that is, because that's not a good, good way to be.
Does he want to try and reset it, maybe? I don't know if he can...
Tech support?
This text is from the...
He said it was not great, but barely okay.
Barely okay, okay.
You do what you want with that.
We'll yell from now on.
Yeah. We're going to, for those on Zoom, if you can hear us, we're going to give it a attempt to correct it, but no guarantees.
I'm going to forward this.
We apologize.
Yeah. Come on. I'm going to turn my mic off in case he gets this thing working, I don't want to blow everybody's eardoms up.
Just waiting for a response, okay?
I think they're talking right now, so...
While they're doing that, why don't we, I know we have a representative from the Community House that will just have, speak to one of the consent agenda items, so if someone wants to make a motion for the minutes to separate those on the consent, and then we can vote the minutes. I'm sure no one on the Zoom is going to oppose us voting on the minutes.
There's nothing else on the consent agenda.
Yeah, there's a banner.
Oh, the minutes, sorry.
The minutes and the block party banner.
I make a motion to approve minutes of four nineteen twenty-two Select Board meeting.
All right, a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye unanimously, passes.
Knocked out of the list.
Check that one off the list.
Sorry to break in, just one technical thing, maybe, because it sounds like if you're speaking to the mics loud enough, it's loud enough in the room.
Picks up the room.
It may pick up on his computer for you, but you have to be kind of more, a little bit bolder with the mics and blasting through the speakers, that's my guess, until it gets fixed back there.
All right, good idea.
All right, so let's get in there.
Hank the speaker volume.
I apologize if it looks like I'm swallowing the microphone, so the people at home can hear. So we have one more item on our consent agenda, and that is approve request to hang a block party banner on Patton Park fence. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve that?
I make a motion to approve the request to hang a block party banner on Patton Park fence.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, Tom and Jamie, get a tie for that one for a second. All right, and I believe we have, Amy, are you, can you hear us? Hi, Amy, so we're going to, not much discussion here, because I'm pretty sure we're going to approve it, I don't mean to put the cart before the horse, but...
No, we can't hear her.
We can't hear you, though. Can we take you off of mute?
We can't hear you.
You have to turn your volume up.
It's going to come out of your computer?
Yeah, it's going to go through yours.
We're going to, we're going to attempt this, we'll see how it works.
No, she's not muted. I think the audio is, I just didn't notice.
There's no audio working.
Do you want to try it again now, Amy? I can hear you.
We can, we can hear you.
Okay. Yep. Do you guys have any...
No, I guess maybe since, if we can kind of barely hear you, but if you want to give it a little shameless promotion, that would be great, and then we'll move to a vote for it.
Awesome. So we have the block party coming up on the twenty-fifth, we have an excellent agenda put together, we're very excited about it, and so we just wanted to get it out there a little bit more, we have one banner in front of the Community House, and that's why we wanted to get one on the tennis court, so it'd be great if you guys get on board with that, but lots of great stuff, so please spread the word. We've got like a full carnival set up, space painting, food trucks, street performers, the equine rescue, we're working really hard on this one, it's going to be a really great day, and I don't know if you can hear anything else.
No, we got you, we heard you, thank you very much. All right, so any further discussion?
So this went through all the proper, it has the insurance policy and all that stuff?
It does.
Okay, yeah.
We got it.
Yep.
It's in the office, I checked it, checked it today, we have it, it's in the office.
All right, so if there's no further discussion, I'll call the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. You're approved, thanks, Amy.
Yeah, we had to turn your microphone down so that we don't blow out of your...
All right, so now on to our regularly scheduled programming here. Our first agenda item is the Hamilton Develop Corporation update from the H D C Chairman, Rick Mitchell. Rick, whenever you're ready, come on up.
They have a presentation I'm going to share, too.
It feels like we need hype songs when people come up to us.
Like when we're coming out for basketball.
Dun, 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 dun.
They get picked their own, they get picked their own music.
Dun, dun, dun. You have to speak into the microphone, Rick.
Rising up!
Okay, wow, thank you. It's a pleasure to be before the Board of Selectmen and in person. I can't remember when, it's been a couple of years. Thank you for the invitation, my name's Rick Mitchell, thirty-six Rock Maple Ave, Chair of the Hamilton Development Corporation, and I was pleased to be invited to provide an update, so as you'll see from the text on the screen, is past, present, and future. And I, a little bit about the past for our two new Board members, Caroline and Tom, who may not have a lot of knowledge and background on the H D C, and even some of the existing members of the Board might have, might have partial but not full information. So why was it created? Well, it was created to foster economic development and growth in the downtown. It was an outgrowth of the last master plan in two thousand and four that created the Economic Development, Economic Development Commission, and they came to the conclusion the town really did not have the tools to engage in any kind of development, so, and the goal was to encourage growth in the downtown, become more better and at creation of jobs and broadening the tax base. How was it created? As I mentioned in the two thousand and four master plan, then in two thousand and ten, the meals tax was proposed by the Town Clerk, somebody I know dearly, and was passed by a town meeting that authorized the meals tax to be collected in Hamilton, to be devoted to downtown development and improvement. In two thousand and eleven, the town meeting approved going to the State Legislature and asking for the authority to create a development corporation that would have the authority to engage in the activities that would promote the development of the downtown. In two thousand and twelve, the Legislature granted a charter to create the Hamilton Development Corporation. So what did the State grant to the H D C? We know it's, it was done to create the, and stimulate business, and it created a five-member Board appointed by the Board of Selectmen with the powers to, and I'll quickly summarize it, to borrow money, buy properties, sell property, lease property, own property, operate property, develop property, and support and attract new businesses. The five-member Board is made up of Angela Arvanites, who owns Monogram, the Monogram Shop, and Two Donkeys, and soon to be expanded to a general store, so she's taking over the entire building at fifty-nine, no, sixty-three Willow. Brian Stein, who was one of the founding members, who's an architect in town, whose offices are right next to the Honeycomb, Chad Smith, who operates a real estate business on Railroad Avenue, Scott Mattern, a former Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry, Select Board member, and Tony Passeretti, who's an associate member who lives right next door on the corner of Linden and Willow Street. So we have a interest group who is really focused on the downtown, who has business in downtown. So some people don't know where the Commercial District is, so it's, I put this map in here, it's actually, if, on the sort of left-hand side top is Willow Street, then it goes down to Asbury, then to Bay Road, and then cuts in sort of near, oh god, Steve's Hair Cutting.
Locksmiths.
Locksmiths now.
Thank you, thank you. And then back out to Walnut, and then behind the shopping center, and then halfway through the MBTA parking lot, and along the Hamilton Wenham property town line, and then connects, again, with Willow Street. It's about twenty-five acres, and that's the Commercial District, and that's where we have our authority as a private nonprofit development corporation. And so, what have we accomplished? Well, we've been pretty busy over the last nine years, but I thought I'd just do some quick highlights. We created, we put together a bylaw and proposed it before town meeting to create residential and commercial uses, because previously there were just commercial uses, not residential. As many of you know, we've got the Willow Street project going on, it's just about completed eighteen units of market rate and nine units of affordable in that. All eighteen units will count towards the town's S H I requirement. It went from a small piece of property with one small house on it to that eighteen units, which is now worth about eight million dollars in construction. There's a twenty-four hundred square feet on the first floor that's going to be a commercial bakery, and I understand it's going to have some retail, but I think that's still being worked out. We fund the railroad, I have benches and trash barrels, we do the flower baskets and wreaths, the flower baskets just went up again. We've provided technical support to business owners in previous years where they wanted to do holiday events, we've provided the insurance money for them to do that. In partnership with the town last year, we got a fifty thousand dollar grant from Mass Office of Business Development, and managed that grant to put on the fall event, to do a townwide mailing that will be coming out shortly to promote downtown businesses again, and also to help encourage the growth of the, I always want to call it, it's local H W now, it's rebranded the Small Business Development Group. We've really been encouraging them to work together, and they're a group of people who have small businesses that are working hard to come and build a membership-based organization, and hopefully they will become self-sustaining. We co-funded a comprehensive parking study to improve downtown parking and signage, we've increased our investment funds to six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars from one hundred and thirty-one thousand, that's primarily from the sale of Willow Street, and we just started a new program initiated to invest and attract, in existing businesses and attract new businesses. Our first grant award, our first application was from the Community House to, for their new public space in the front there, we made a grant of twenty, they asked for sixty, we made a grant of twenty thousand, a ten thousand would be paid in this fiscal year, and then ten thousand in the next fiscal year. Part of that was to actually build a strong partnership with the Community House and be able to access their members, because we really have a strong interest, the Community House does, the H D C does, local businesses, is to strengthen each other and strengthen the relationships and work together to try and attract people to the downtown and make it more of a destination, rather than just go to shop and, you know, go to CVS or Crosby's to pick up food and leave, that, we're trying to make it more sticky, and we have some plans to do that. This is just a few of the things we've done over the last eight or nine years. Okay, future potential projects, some with criteria, we're looking at underused, unused, and, and, or underused again, that's a remark from the Department of Redundancy, or undeveloped areas, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. Leverage and maximize the value of private investment and sources of public revenue. Just as we did with Willow Street, we used the meals tax to fund the mortgage that we got to buy the property, and also take, hire the architects, engineers, to design the project and put it out to bid, and we got a private sector developer, Tragorth Companies, who I have to say is probably one of the best companies I've ever dealt with, they are just fantastic in terms of their commitment to excellence in construction and interacting with the neighbors. They have weekly meetings with the neighbors to tell them what's going on, when it's going to go on, and resolve any particular issues, and it really set the standard for anything we do in the future. So some potential projects we have under consideration are the Hansberry Dodge Tree Property Reuse. Chad Smith, in his role as a commercial and residential real estate expert, tracked down and found the owners of that property and approached them and asked if they would be interested in selling it. They are not, we asked if we could get an option on the property, they weren't interested in giving us an option, but we still are, will continue to pursue that, because you never know when that might change. The same with Welch and Lamson Property Reuse, they were not interested in selling the property either. One of the things we're going to be working on in the future is downtown signage, parking, and branding, and really work on branding and trying to help raise the image of the downtown as an attractive place to, to shop and come and use the facilities that are down there. We're looking to obtain federal and state grants, literally, and Joe, you would know this better, but there's probably eight or nine billion dollars of recovery money that's been allocated to the state, so we're going to be looking at those, as well as the regular state grants that exist for road improvements, and that gets to one of the things, the last item on there, that we want to work and partner with the town where we can and use our resources, if possible, to help with the planning and maybe some of the preliminary design that would be required to get the ball rolling, to submit applications to the state to obtain this funding, because the town, downtown really desperately needs to be really improved in terms of its image, and also, it's not cohesive, it's divided by, as we all know, Bay Road, we really have two shopping districts, and so better signage, better pedestrian markings, and sidewalks would certainly make downtown look a lot better, and certainly would be more conducive to pedestrian flow between the two. more conducive to pedestrian flow between the two sides of Bay Road. We're also looking at Bay Road, there's a, the little, I'll call it a park, but it's really a green space at the corner of Railroad Ave and Bay Road. There's a big blue spruce there. And there's, there's the thought that potentially the HDC could either enter into a long-term lease or buy the property outright. Dave Cutter is actually in the process of buying that from the condominium trust that owns the veterinary building, the bank building, and the medical building. And we've been in conversation with him about doing that. He's amenable to discuss it. As he said, it all comes down to money. So, stay tuned. It would be wonderful if we could work something out and turn that actually into a little park with benches and something, so people could actually come and sit in the downtown and get a coffee or some pastries and enjoy the, being in the downtown. So that's a quick and, and dirty overview of past, present, and future of the HDC. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions from the board?
Thank you for all you do to beautify downtown. It's made a big difference. Question for you, do you still own property, correct?
Do we still own property? No, we sold it.
Well, all of it?
We sold it.
I thought there was, I thought you divided into two lots, but, so you, okay.
No, it was a one-acre lot, and you had to sell both, the entire property in order to fit the eighteen-unit building there, as well as the septic system and the parking. So, and that's where the proceeds came from. We sold it for a million dollars. And that's where we have reserve funds. Those are sitting there. We've divided them into pots, really allocated for if, for example, Dodge Tree or another piece of property downtown becomes available. We have reserved those funds so that we can move quickly to see if we can buy that piece of property and do what we did with Willow Street on it as well. We've also reserved funds for pedestrian improvements. Again, as I mentioned, is working with the town to see if we can leverage federal and state funds to make improvements in park, parking, pedestrian, roadway improvements. And, and then the third pot of money is for this downtown business improvement. As I mentioned, we allocated twenty thousand dollars to the community fund. We've got remaining funds that I, I've heard that local HW is going to be making a submission because they want to do another fall festival. So, we'll be helping them with that. And we've committed at least to spend up to thirty percent of the annual meals tax revenues that we get for assisting downtown businesses or attracting new businesses to the downtown. Long-winded answer to your question, Bill.
So who owns, so then the Mac Schubel is owned by the new developers?
Yeah. It's owned, it's owned by Tragorth Companies, and they spun off into an LLC.
Okay, great. Thank you. Other questions?
There's also a volunteer group that does beautification of downtown. Is that true?
Yeah, you're talking about Robin and...
Yeah. Is there any overlap in the stuff that they do and the stuff that y'all do, or is it more just, are there efficiencies to be gained here, is what I'm asking?
Yes, and Robin and her husband, Jack, have been very active, and, you know, they've gone down and picked the weeds out, and they've, you know, cleaned up the boxes at the post office. So we've been talking with them, and we, you know, we'd love to, and we have been working with them, and in fact, we engaged our attorney to put together a, an agreement that we tried to get the US Post Office to allow us to invest in beautification in front of the post office, and put in benches and new flower boxes, and actually put a new sign, you know, because that god-awful sign up there is, you know, we could put a nice carved sign up there. And she even went and did the research to put vinyl cover over the bollards, so you don't have these ugly yellow things in the parking lot. The post office said, no. So, yes, we, if we've been working with them, and if they were, and, you know, they've asked for, can you help us with funding? And, and we said we'd love to, but they're not a 501(c)(3). We can't just give money to...
Private citizens, right?
Public citizens, as much as we'd like to. So, we're definitely working with them. We've also talked to the garden club, and we actually pay for the watering of all the boxes that the garden club plants. So...
Similar to the paying for the watering, could, if the, the group that's kind of doing the volunteer cleanup, instead of giving them money, if, could you buy them the, the tools, equipment, and supplies they might need? And, just an idea.
As much as I'd love to, again, we've got, they have to be an entity. So, I've, I've approached a couple of members of the garden club and said, well, how about you guys applying and, you know, for tools and kind of thing, and merge with Robin and her husband, Jack, and like, become more actively engaged, and then we can provide, based on a grant application, funding for tools and flower boxes and other things for beautification. They haven't taken us up on it.
All right, some future collaboration, maybe?
Yeah.
So, and I guess my question's a little bit, is it two thousand four, when did we do that charrette, the kind of visioning plan for downtown? Was that two thousand fourteen or sixteen?
Oh...
It's been a little while ago.
With the Cecil Group?
Yeah, we had the pedestrian stuff across Bay Road and the branding and...
No, that's, we, well, that's a good, I'm glad you brought that up. We hired a landscape architect to do design of improving Railroad Avenue. We had two...
Yeah, we had charrette with, I think, MAPC and stuff. Is that, is that the one I'm thinking about?
No, that was a different one.
Different one.
Oh, by the way, self-promotion, if you go to the town website and you go to the HDC, there's a chronological list, two pages long, of all the things that we've done over, since our initiation. Yes, we've done a number of studies. The, we got a bar, a grant from the Bar Foundation via MAPC Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and they did a village plan.
Right, because that was when we were talking about the, kind of the post office reconfiguring some lots and stuff like that. I think that was the one that I'm talking about, right?
Yeah, and then more recently, a couple of years ago, we hired a landscape architect to give us renderings of improving Railroad Avenue as a pilot project and say, hey, this is some, if, you know, this would be a good thing to do. It would show how the downtown really could be enhanced and beautified, putting in new sidewalks, trees, pedestrian crossings, and really making it very attractive. So that's still i- in, and that's our focus. We really are focusing now that Willow Street is done, and it really consumed us for really eight years. We're a five-member volunteer board. Mary Alice Cookson helps us out with minutes and some administrative work, but it's all done by the five-member board. So, we're over that hurdle. Now we really want to focus on promoting downtown businesses and promoting the downtown and promoting infrastructure improvements, to really see if we can make some visual and infrastructure improvements that really people can look at and say, hey, now I understand what you guys do. Because, and, because most people don't know who the HDC is. They might have heard the initials, but they don't really know what we do. So we're really doing a lot of outreach, and, and we're going to be coming, going around and talking to all the boards and committees, and getting their ideas and their input, and letting them know what we're doing and how they can help us, because we're best-kept secret in town, but it, we really now need to, doing a lot of outreach and...
Yeah. And so I guess my kind of lead into that, and you said everything I wanted to hear, but could you share those two kind of charrettes that we did with, I know, Bill, you probably have it, but Tom, Caroline, I don't know if Jamie has it. Could you share that with me, and I can share it with the board, both of those things? Because I think that's important, that we kind of get an idea of what the potential is downtown from those two charrettes and visioning kind of studies that we did. And then also, because Caroline is on the Master Plan Steering Committee, to share that with them as well, because we're future planning here. So, having an idea of where we're going, or where we would like to go would be great, and then working in tandem with the HDC to kind of work in collaboration with the town to move in a direction and help with funding and et cetera, and grant writing and et cetera, so that we can improve the downtown. Because what I remember from both of those kind of studies we did is that, I don't want to say it to disparage Jamie, but our downtown's a bit of a mess. There's a lot of different surfaces. We've got blacktop, we've got fake brick, we've got concrete. It's all in a bit of disrepair, and it's going to cost a substantial amount of money to, to do that, and to make it a unified thing.
Right.
So, you know, it, working with the HDC and the town, and seeing what this visionary report is saying the potential can be, you know, we can work towards that goal of improving downtown and then improving our businesses and bolstering all those different independent businesses downtown. And I guess, not really a question, but could you forward that information to me? I can distribute it to the board.
Absolutely, be delighted to do that. And I, I'm glad you brought that up, because one thing we've been talking about that relates to the master plan is potentially working with the Community House and sponsoring a public session, because one of the challenges that the master plan is, is facing is its need to involve citizens. Right now, citizens really aren't engaged in the master plan, and that's a serious shortcoming, because when push comes to shove, i.e. money, or new regulations or new zoning bylaws...
We need buy-in.
Then, we need buy-in. So we were thinking of potentially the HDC sponsoring a public session focused on the downtown and maybe commercial development as, to fit into that economic development component piece, as a way to offer our services and be more visible, and actually discuss the kinds of things that you're talking about.
Did you like how I led you into that, Rick?
Thank you. It was like, you know, horse to water.
Puppet master over there.
It kind of a follow-up on that. And when we did those reports, and I can't remember, it was, it was more of kind of aesthetics and flow pedestrian stuff. And we all know we have a bit of an issue with our downtown, that we're limited in, in the size of our commercial district, and mainly our, kind of our waste capacity, water, septic, et cetera. And I can't recall if any of those studies that we did gave us kind of what our options were if we don't have a town septic system. When we looked at the price for that, I think it was...
Town sewer.
Town sewer, sorry, town sewer. I think it was twenty-plus million dollars, and there was a few different plans when we had done it years ago, and it seemed like pie in the sky. Still, I still believe it's probably pie in the sky, but what businesses, or has it been looked at in the study, that, what businesses can we sustain so that we can promote those businesses and have a good variety of businesses that bring traffic and people downtown?
Right, and, and that's really the cart, you know, what is it, the chicken and the egg, is, I think probably that number, twenty million, is probably realistic now. At the time, and this was probably ten, almost ten, ten years ago when we did it, was ten million. And that was just the, within the commercial district. And, you know, that number was staggering then, and it, that number is still staggering. And we won't get the kind of development, intensity of development until we have a septic system, because we're limited by septic. I mean, we really can't build much more downtown until we have a septic system, or our businesses come up with packaged sewer treatment plans on their own property. We can look at segments, doing, you know, can we do like a section? But it's still a lot of money. But there's a lot of money out there now for infrastructure improvement and septic systems. So, the, I think we got to strike while the iron is hot.
Right.
That's where we're going to be focusing our time and effort is to, and we've got to be working with Joe and, and Tim as well, on what can we do to help to get that ball rolling? I mean, we need, we need our own plan, is like, what is, what's out there that we can grab now? And I don't know that. I started researching it, and it's, it's, there's a lot of work to be done. So, it, we may have to engage a consultant to actually help guide us to do that, and come up with a, a menu of things that we could grasp onto in terms of federal and state funds to meet that, meet that need for septic, traffic, sidewalks, roadways, et cetera. Because we're very good at it. I mean, and I don't mean we, the HDC, the town is very good at finding money and getting money.
Any other questions?
You mentioned about, and I don't want to belabor, but you mentioned about signage on one of your things that you're working on, is that sign, like just, is that individual retail signage, or is that just signage in general for the town?
Uh, no, that's one of the things that the parking study identified is the signage is either nonexistent or poor, and the town really needs a, a, a comprehensive signage and wayfinding. I mean, because the parking regulations are about forty or fifty years old, and so we needed, we needed to update it, and that's why we funded the, partially funded the parking study. And hopefully Patrick will free up some time, maybe when one thirty-three Essex Street gets through the system, to actually focus on implementing the recommendations of the parking study, and we're certainly willing to work with the town in helping with that.
What about our retail signage policy? That needs some work too.
And I kind of read into your question, it's kind of twofold. It's, it's, it's...
I think that needs some work too.
Parking and wayfinding signage, right, which is part of the parking study, but then also part of the visioning plan. And I think a handful of years ago, we had the shopping center come before us, signage underneath the canopy and stuff like that.
People are out in the parking lot trying to find the signs.
Yeah, and so kind of an overall, and I think that goes with the downtown visioning and unification of kind of, here is our standard sign, size, and font, and et cetera, like a lot of towns have.
Yep, yep. Excellent idea, excellent idea.
Put on a list, Rick.
Put on the list.
Put on a list.
Yeah, the list is endless.
Right.
And there's some, you know, it's, this is a full-time job, and I enjoy doing it. I know the other members enjoy doing it as well, and so we have to pick our, you know, our, our goals and be very specific about it. Otherwise, we just, you know, we get depleted and distracted, and so, but I like the fact that you're asking for those things. The more focus and pressure you can bring to bear on us, we make it our priority.
All right. Any other further questions for Rick?
No, thank you, Rick.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate you coming in tonight.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right, up next, we have review the draft letter to the Beverly City Council regarding National Good Transmission Line Project. And we had, I think it was Faith came in last time and spoke to us about it. This is in your packets, and it's basically to the City Council President, Julie Flowers, in the Beverly City Council. And you can see it there.
We can amend this however you like. It's currently drafted for me to sign, but as I mentioned, I think it holds more weight if it comes from the elected board. So if you're approving of it, we can redraft it for your signatures, or for Sean's signature on behalf of you all, and, and submit it to the Beverly City Council.
Thoughts on any changes? And if you haven't read it, it's not that long, you can read through it right now. And I like the last kind of line you have there. Really a matter of providing a reliable source of electricity supply to residents and businesses. Without this project, we are at the risk of losing our system resiliency and quite literally being left in the dark, where we often are when there's a problem with the Ipswich or Beverly line, which is through our town.
Joe did used to be a journalist.
I thought it was clever.
He's got that writing flair still.
So, I mean, and Joe mentioned it just a second ago, that, I mean, if, if you haven't yet, it, shout him out, but I read through it, it seems good, and I like the last line there. But I, I would say that we should sign it as well as Joe, unless you want to authorize Joe or myself to sign it, but I think it would have more weight if it was...
I don't want to hold it up, but I would think we should all sign it, yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I approve, I make a motion to approve the draft as written by Joe Demelwitz for the Beverly Regional Transmission Reliability Project.
And adding?
And adding the select board signatures.
All right. Any other edits or discussion?
Is it second?
Oh, second, did somebody second? You seconded?
Second.
Okay, Jamie seconded. Any further discussion? Any further discussion or comments?
Not for me.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it, passes. Thank you, everybody. Up next, we have water abatement for Bay Road property. And this is Kegans and Joe, you bring that up.
Yeah, this is actually not recommended by the DPW director, I believe.
Right.
But it's your decision, so.
And so, we, just to bring everybody up to speed and those of you sitting behind the tables here, we know we talked about this briefly before and we tabled it to get some more information. I'm trying to find Tim's email here. Is this Tim's email?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so I've got, yeah, so I've read the whole...
You've read the whole thing.
Whole thing, right? So, and I'd ask for sort of more clarification on it. So, I think we need to do, I think we need to do two things. More importantly, we need to clarify our policy because our policy is very vague. Doesn't talk about exterior plumbing, doesn't talk about water ban, doesn't talk about irrigation systems. By the letter of the law, we should approve the amended abatement. He took a three-year average, he was over it by 35,000, he divided it in half, calculated the rate, that's $497. So, by the letter of the law, how our current policy is written, you know, I can see how the 426 makes sense to amend it. But I don't think moving forward, we should, we should abate this type of...
No, I agree.
Of reasoning. So, but I don't know that we have the ability now until we change our policy. Our policy is very vague.
Right, and even though our DPW director has recommended to not vote in favor of this, I tend to agree with Bill and I'm willing to hear everybody else's opinions on it. But as much as I don't like it, I think we have to approve it because we don't clearly state...
I'll read, per Section 5 of the Town of Hamilton Water Abatement Policy, the Town of Hamilton Board Select Man shall consider a one-time abatement per account during any 10-year period equal to half of the water consumption above normal consumption. Normal consumption will be the average of at least the previous three years compensation history for similar periods unless deemed otherwise by the DPW director. Well, if you just go by the, by the letter of the law, it's, they took three years. It met the, it met the 35,000 gallon divided in half multiplied by the rate. So, I mean, I don't, you know, it's supposed to be a policy, it's not supposed to be a...
I would, I would just say that the Section 5 clearly states that you shall consider. It doesn't say that you shall grant.
Yeah, true, yeah.
So, you do have...
Right, it's our ultimate decision either way. You know, and I believe the DPW director believes this is, it's tricky because the pattern shows that it's been in irrigation, you know, which is typically we've never done this this way.
Never been asked for an abatement.
We've never been asked for an abatement because your irrigation broke. And I believe the explanation they gave was there was a spike in pressure in the town water system. But we, we didn't hear that from anybody else in town. So, I tend to not believe that's the case. I, you know, I believe it's some faulty irrigation system, which opens a whole can of worms for anybody to abate their irrigation system, which in my mind isn't fit the concept of the abatement. I mean, I guess you could debate the general, I don't know how to put it, the general... The word I'm looking for. Typically, we have an understanding of what the abatement process covers. I believe this is out of the scope, but we don't outright state it. So, that's the sticky part of it.
Yeah, I mean, it's not precluded by the language of the, the policy, but it also gives discretion to the select board. So, it's, you know, I mean, I think there's an ability to deny it if that was the decision of the select board, given that it's not expressly allowed in the policy. It's just assumed. And ultimately, the select board is the final decision maker. So, I think there is, you know, a path forward if that were the, the way the board wanted to go. But I don't think it's, I don't think our hands are tied, so to speak, I guess.
Right, no, I don't think our hands are tied.
It does, it does seem like we only have the choice of allow or deny, not like, oh, let's do $300 or something like that. Because it is clear as to what the amount...
What the percentage of the matrix is, right.
I mean, I don't have anything, I don't mind learning a $426 lesson around tightening the policy. Were there changes that should have been made after the Asbury abatement that were never made?
I would say that had nothing to do with irrigation, so we wouldn't have, we didn't learn this lesson. I think it, the challenge there was it was a water service to a house that was turned on. And because of where that house, that cottage was, nobody knew that the water was just like running through, building, unfettered.
I only ask if we're going to, if we're going to revisit the policy, do we need to not learn any more...
Listically about it.
Lessons that we pay for.
Yeah, I mean, we need to, right, we need to put that on next week's, or next meeting's agenda to remake the policy.
Yeah, my only comment would be that if we were to allow it, then that, you know, sets the precedent that irrigation is included in this policy as written. And until that policy is finalized, we're in, we're in the middle of summer. You know, we're, we're looking at...
But you're going to update it tonight?
I'm going to go home right now.
Tom's already...
I, I will not sleep until this is done, no. I'm not saying we shouldn't, we should not at this moment, I'm just saying that's one thing to consider is that...
Right, there could be another...
That once this vote goes through, that there is precedent that we will allow that and...
Right.
It was submitted in good faith, right? It wasn't...
I, yeah, we can make that motion that we, that this is the last abatement.
We could put a condition on our motion tonight.
That it's the last for exterior irrigation.
And then we can change the policy. Yeah, that's correct. We could do that.
We can do that. We can do a conditional sort of change and not consider it.
So, there's a little bit of...
Kind of like when the Supreme Court says there's no precedential value to this decision, we're just going to one-time rule.
We're just going to do this. Jamie, I see the wheels turning.
Great legal mind of our time.
No, I mean, I guess... I guess my, I mean, one, I think, right, and Tom pretty much has already said it, I'm just saying it a different way, like, and because it does say shall consider, like, we have the discretion to make a decision otherwise. And ordinarily, I think I would be, I would lean towards what is sort of being floated of, you know, all right, this is our, this is our lesson, let's change the policy. The only thing that's, I guess, still bugging me is, I mean, like, the cause of it and then what was the...
Did we get a copy of anything?
Why didn't they just, is there, and I don't know anything about water systems or... Why didn't they discover, so like, I understand you get, normally you get your water bill, oh my gosh, my water bill's higher than normal. But why wouldn't that have been discovered? Because it was out in a field somewhere?
Right, you get a big wet spot in your lawn, right, where your, where your shut-off is.
Yeah, okay, I, yeah, I guess I get that.
I mean, when, and then I guess, kind of going back, I'm not, I don't have it in front of me, but...
We're also abating, keep in mind, we're abating the higher rate. Like, we're abating the $13.32 per...
The higher rate.
Rate. We're not abating a $4.62 rate. So, I'm saying they're sort of already paying a 4X premium because they got to that level. So, it's kind of, we're not abating like a consumption rate. It's a, it's a pound of flesh for, because they're at a higher rate.
They're at the higher usage rate, right?
And just to Jamie's point and sort of the, the water abatement application here where it talks about the basis for it and talking about the high pressure. I mean, it seems like there's not really evidence to support that.
Correct.
It doesn't, prior policy, there doesn't need to be a reason for it. It just needs to be a leak, like a preventable leak, right, so...
And that, and that they acted proactively once they found out.
Once they found a leak, which is, which is the only...
Which they did, which they did, right. Which they did.
Right.
So...
And they can only do it one time in the history of their life?
10 years.
Oh, every 10 years.
Every 10 years.
One month, except that we're going to change the policy.
One month, every 10 years.
Yeah, one month every 10.
So, I make a motion to approve the water abatement for...
You can just say the Bay Road property.
The Bay Road project, with the caveat that moving forward, we will not approve any abatements for irrigation and we will rework our policy within the next month.
And just say property, instead of project, and you got it. You said property or project.
Oh, Bay Road property.
Yeah.
Do we want...
Did someone second it?
Second.
Second, all right, further discussion?
So, my only question would be maybe in a, just throwing this out there, an amendment, so should it be other outdoor watering, not just irrigation, like irrigation?
Yeah, it could be a spigot. Could be a hose, outside hose. But, you know, like I have peerless freeze-proof frostsets on my spigots. If I didn't have one and I didn't stop my hose in the winter time, that busts and I go away to Florida for the winter, the hose is dumping water all over the backyard until it freezes again.
Make the amendment to just say no exterior water.
No exterior, yeah. I amend the motion to say that moving forward, we will not approve any exterior plumbing leakage abatements.
I think that covers it. All right, second on the amended motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? No further discussion? All right.
I think, I think the policy would be pretty easy to amend. So, I think it's only like maybe two sentences that we could add to it.
Yeah, I did, I did, I did look at November water, air, I did look at November temps to see if actually it was like, it was, it was no freezing.
Freeze, yeah.
And so, it wasn't like, oh, they could have prevented it because they didn't, they didn't sort of... Blow out drain and blow out the irrigation. There was no, there was no freeze thaw in November that year, but I thought, who knows? But, and I, once again, I do agree with Tim that this is not the spirit of the abatement, which is why I think that we should change the language in the policy. But I think we have to prove this as, like I said, a lesson learned and move forward.
There a reason to put a cap, like 50% up to $500? Like, I don't know the, like, how big they are, but if a 50% is $1,800 versus someone who files one for $200 and everybody gets one, that seems like a, a scale that seems a little unfair.
Go back, go home, is what you're suggesting.
Well, I mean, if you're discussing, like we talked about the Grove issue...
That was thousands of dollars.
That was thousands of thousands.
No, yeah, I know, it is in the back of my mind. I'm just wondering across the board, like, there's less pressure on a policy if in the end, the overall cost, like, projected cost is capped. Whereas if we're just saying like...
Right, one month every 10 years at a cap of $1,000.
Yeah.
Theoretically, not, not saying that I'm proposing that, but that would be a cap.
Let's vote on this motion and then we can revisit.
We're getting out of the, sorry, we're getting out of our...
That should be our, that should be when Tom drafts the next policy.
Tom, I'd like a cap, Tom.
All right, so we have a motion, an amended motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Motion passes, the abatement is approved. When we talk about new business, let's...
That's Tim Olson, if he can come up with some language that he would save some of his time in the future. I know he spends a lot of time on these water abatements, so give him the opportunity to propose some language that we can review.
Yep. All right, up next, we have approved new contracts for Police Chief Russell Stevens and Fire Chief Raymond Brunet.
You have the contracts in front of you. Both contracts have been negotiated in good faith with the two chiefs. Chief Brunet's contract would extend him for four years and Chief Stevens would extend him for three. Virtually, they, you know, this salary adjustment, similar to what we give to the contract, to the unionized employees. We did add some stipends into Chief Brunet's because he was underpaid compared to some of his contemporaries and particularly compared to the police chief. But other than a couple of stipends and some colos, he's, they've agreed to a good contract. They've both been doing excellent work on behalf of the town. And I urge you or request that you approve the contracts. And then we'll have them set up for you to sign in the town manager's office later, later in the week.
Anybody want to make a motion that we can discuss?
Are we making the motion for both at the same time?
We can do individual or both, it's up to you.
I think we should do individual.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the employment contract between Town of Hamilton and Fire Chief.
All right, second?
Second.
Second by Jamie. Further discussion for Chief Brunet?
So, the only comment I had was that there's, you know, obviously there are different contracts, but in the, I should have reviewed the other one first, but in the, in the Chief Stevens contract in paragraph 2.8, it says, "In the event that the town implements police department regionalization, merger or other cost-sharing initiatives between, during the term of his contract, the employee agrees to cooperate any reasonable changes of his title and duties that the town determines are in the best interest of the regionalization, merger or cost-sharing initiative." There's a good clause, there's no guarantee, but at least it's the spirit of, we're, we're talking about, you know, as we talk about combining town service, I'm not saying we will or we won't, but it has that option for us to do that, right? That's one of our goals, I think we said, right? So, it's not in the fire chief's contract that language. Is there a reason why we can't add it?
I think that largely that's there because Chief Stevens is not just the police chief, he's your Public Safety Director and as such, has some authority over the entire public safety operation, including the ECOs and the Fire Department.
He's got more of a bigger blanket.
Chief Brunet is really only the Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director, which typically falls with the Fire Chief. So, there wouldn't be really the opportunity to be like downsizing his job and things the way there would be unless you...
I'm not saying downsize, I would just change it. Like, what if we regionalize the Fire Department? We have the ability to do that. I just want to leave, I don't want to just box these four years, right? I don't want to box ourselves in the corner, we're not allowed to do something because of a contract we signed, that's all. I'm not saying it's a possibility, I just like to not eliminate options if we don't have to eliminate options.
I don't think there's anything in here that keeps us from talking to him about changing his job description in the future.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying to, I'm not saying to change his pay or change his length, but just if we have to...
We're, we're looking at the possibility of starting to build the capacity to one day maybe offer ambulance service to the Fire Department. So, that's something he's working on. He understands that that's something that could be, I don't think, if you want, we can add it. I don't know that it's necessary, but we can...
I guess, similar to Bill, I have the same question, which is like, this makes it sound like if we needed to change your title, it wouldn't affect your contract because your contract says we could change your title or shift it if we combined regional, whereas...
I, I don't think we want to lock ourselves in it. If we, if we regionalize fire departments, for instance, which isn't on the table at all, you're only going to have one chief, so you're going to have to assume that you're, either your chief is going or their chief is going. And that's one of the things that stops these types of things from happening all the time.
But I think what we're saying is if we have a four-year contract with, with someone, we couldn't do that because we couldn't let a chief go because we regionalized. Whereas the other one has language that makes it sound like if we decided to regionalize, we could change your title.
I, I don't necessarily agree with that. We could still regionalize the department and get rid of the chief's position if we wanted to as long as we had a chief representing the town. So, in the regionalization, you'd have another chief representing the town. Or possibly Ray would be representing another town as well. It's not, we still have management rights to manage the department as we seek.
They're, they're an at-will, employee-based contract.
In the state of Massachusetts, strong chief's language, strong fire chief language, there, there's certain things we wouldn't be able to take or give to him anyway.
Okay, I mean, as long as you feel like it's not going to stop those conversations, I think it's fine. It's just interesting that it's in one and not the other.
The, the one that was negotiated for Chief Stevens was negotiated by the select board a number of years ago before I got here. We negotiated Ray's, myself and the chief three years ago and we basically kept the same contract. As I said, we changed very little in terms of language in either contract, except for pay.
Right.
We do need to change, it does say Board of Selectmen.
That's because I drafted this before you guys were a select board. Okay, we can, we can change that.
Do you have other comments, Jamie, or is just the...
I did, I did, actually.
Okay, go ahead.
Where does it say, because...
One duties under the direction of the Board of...
On which one, Ray's or Russ's?
Yeah, we're talking about...
Ray's.
We're talking about Ray's, yeah.
The second sentence.
Their number one duty.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But afterward...
You only have to change it there.
It's virtually the Board, elsewhere we're still...
Yeah, the rest is just the Board.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Good catch.
Thanks, Jamie.
And my only other question, which unfortunately I didn't read this as carefully as I should before, is, so like, I see there's like a stipend for the Emergency Management Director and whatever. And when it says number one duties, do we, that, those duties of the Emergency Management Director are, are... in those duties, I imagine? In other words, should, when it says duty, should we add like, whatever, the role of the emergency management director? Probably unnecessary, but.
Do you know what he's saying?
Yeah, I think so, so up here, no, for a section of the thing says duties, but he has a stipend for emergency management director and it does include those amount of duties?
Is there, in that clause, it says the mutually agreed upon job description, is that, does those duties include in that?
His emergency management director, yes, are included in.
That would be in the mutually agreed upon job description, you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah. But, and is, so is that mutually agreed upon job description, like is that?
I don't have it with you, but I can get it for you.
But, so there is one?
There was, yeah, there is one.
Okay.
And that's part of it?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, anything else?
So what's the opinion on adding the flexibility of a regionalization option? Do we not think it's, I mean, this, this has to be signed before July 1st, right?
Yep.
Where was the clause in the Chief Stevens contract that you want to?
2.8.
2.8?
Yeah.
I, it's up to you, if you want me to add it, we can, I can go back in and find a place to add it, it just, I, I think we have a right to do it anyway.
Okay, I think we do because it.
We have management rights to manage.
Chief is our public safety director, is overseeing the fire department, ECO and everything, so it makes a little more sense in his contract than, than Ray's, to me anyway, but depending on whatever the will of the board is, we can.
I have another strong opinion or the other, I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention.
Make sure we're covering our bases.
Yes, it's highly unlikely we're going to regionalize in the next four years, but.
We have to amend the language anyway with the select board versus selectmen.
But that doesn't need to go back to.
No, not necessarily.
Ray's not going to, this, this.
That's, that's a, just a clerical error.
Right, this would have to go back to.
But this would have to go back to Ray.
And he, and he was being represented by whom?
He represented himself.
He did?
Yeah.
I was going to, I'm not trying to renegotiate the dollars or the duration or the anything responsibility, just create flexibility for the town. So I'm fine with it if we think we don't, if we think we're protected and the odds that it would happen in four years, we'd pick, I'd take that long to plan for it and then probably would do it.
Take that long anyways to try and move on it.
Who tracks vacation for?
Sorry, say that again?
Who tracks vacation for?
Tracked through the payroll system.
Okay, there's like a clock in, clock out?
No, you, you have to go into the system and, and request your days off and that gets approved and then those days get charged as paid holiday or paid vacation days or paid sick days or whatever they are instead of, you know, time on. And salary includes like, the chief and I don't have to clock in, clock out, but we do recognize when our, our paid time off is.
You have to notify them when you're not going to be there.
In the web, web portal.
Alrighty. More thoughts going on, does anybody, do we have a motion, did we have a second, do we have an amendment?
We had a motion, we had a second, we had further discussion on the, on the clause to add the flexibility clause and we're going to, I think.
I mean, I, I'm a little bit, I'm a little with Bill in that it's in one of them and so you would think it would be in both, but.
Do we?
Does it mean something if it's not in both, I don't.
Is it worth passing it by Labor Council or Town Council to see if it's needed?
We have one, we have another meeting before the 22nd.
Right.
And so I think we should give, I think we should give, I think we should give Ray a positive motion, say, say we approve of the contract. However, we would like to add some flexibility to it to protect the town, not to put you in any danger. So we'd just like to you to consider the possibility. It's not, you know, a deal breaker, but in terms of building the town, and I think that would, I don't want it to like, think that we're, like, we're.
Right, we're, we're definitely going to approve a contract because we like them and want to keep them.
Right.
So do we need an amended motion?
If we're going to go that way.
Okay.
So I'd like to amend the motion, I'd amend the motion that we approve the contract between the Town of Hamilton Select Board and the fire chief pending the change to paragraph one duties, changing it from Board of Selectmen to Select Board and adding verbiage similar to 2.8 on, under Chief Stevens' proposed contract to add some flexibility for future restructuring or reorganization, does not affect the terms of Ray's compensation.
Second.
Second by Jamie, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, ayes have it.
So therefore, if he approves the change, you don't have to come back to us. If he doesn't approve the change, then we just have to vote on the original contract and we do that on next, next meeting.
Next meeting. All right, second one, we have Chief Stevens' contract, anybody want to make a motion and then we can discuss?
Move that we approve the contract with the police chief, Russell Stevens.
All right, second by anybody?
It's a public safety director.
Correct.
So, yeah, so just to make it clear.
Second.
All right, second, discussion?
I thought that, I, I had no comments, I thought it was a, a very well-written contract.
Nice job, Joe.
That was the one the select board wrote.
All right, any, any further discussion? All right, then we'll take it to a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, the ayes have it. All right, up next, we have approve a one-day liquor license policy amendment. And I believe Tom and Joe, do you have the, bring that up for folks? All right, so we've got some, basically some minor changes here, I think. Minor slash major, I guess, depending how you look at it.
Okay.
I actually, there's one typo that I missed on the, under the application process. Number two, required documentation. It says, "In addition to the completed application, the town requires that the applicant to provide the following," just eliminate the two, but just applicant provide the following.
Where is that?
Under application process, number two, where it says required documentation.
Okay, see.
Just noticed that.
All right, comments on Tom's edits? If there's none, someone can make a motion, we could discuss it if someone thinks of something in the meanwhile.
I move that we approve the one-day liquor license policy in the packet.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm just, I apologize to believe with this, but I'm just trying to, the intent of the original, before you guys run the board, but the intent of the original policy, my intent was to have one policy that dictated any one-day license. So you could go to one place, whether it was public or private property, whether it was a not-for-profit, non-for-profit, or private event, right? And so what I, is that still our intent? Is this policy supposed to be all encompassing of any one-day license, no matter if it's public or private property, no matter if it's for-profit, non-for-profit, or private event? Because I think we're missing like one line if it is.
You mean under section A where it says any public?
For any event held on public or private property that meets the requirements of, you know, that's, 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 we're, we're not combining them. I, I, the policy's fine, I have nothing to say about the policy, it's perfect, I just think we need like a one line that says like, this is for, like the, like public, a pub, a, an event held on public property, it's either for-profit or, or, or for a charity, for a nonprofit, or an event held on public property that's for those three, this is, it serves, this policy should serve five categories, right? Public property, for profit, nonprofit, or private.
Right.
And then a private property that's going to do a public event for.
Profit.
Profit or nonprofit.
Right.
I think we just need to list those in here and then we're, we're good. I think it's almost under A, just list them under A, that was just five things.
Under A, just add applicable.
In the bold area.
Applicable to.
The following conditions, and there's five conditions that I understand that need a one-day liquor license, right?
Category.
Five categories.
Yeah.
What about just for any event that needs a one-day liquor license in the Town of Hamilton? Because that would, that would, all those events would be classified under any, of any event that would require a one-day liquor license in the Town of Hamilton.
What defines what needs a liquor license though, does this define that?
State law, state law tells you, if you don't have, if you don't, if you don't have a license to serve or don't have a caterer that has a license to serve, you need a one-day license. And so any event that requires a one-day liquor license from the Town of Hamilton.
In accordance with MGL, whatever.
Yeah, I think that's fine, I'm good with that.
Bill, all right, the only thing in, I'm, this is all from before Tom and Caroline were on, is that I thought I, I'm pretty sure I remembered that, that 138, section 14 does not apply to public property.
Yes, right, correct, and they.
That was it, because we didn't have a public.
A B C C silent on public property.
Yes.
And that was the kind of rub with figuring it all out.
Right.
Right, but that's why you have the rest of the policy.
But we're saying any, right, but that's including.
How about, how about it says something like this, Joe, how about it says, "For anyone who needs a one-day liquor license, including events, public or private events on public property."
Yes.
I mean, right, something like that?
Are you making that change?
Yeah.
Yes, good.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll trust the lawyers to manage it.
All right, so Tom.
You're editing section A already, the one, the bold line?
Yeah, did you, did you fix your typo?
Yeah, I'm going to fix the typo, those are typo on, and section A too, I saw, I just saw.
The headline?
I will fix section A to include this language of any event requiring a one-day license in accordance with the MGLs, including any public or private event on public property.
It also says select men on the top.
What?
What?
I know that's usually your thing, I just, I just thought it was the one select lady.
Right on the top, Town of Hamilton policy regarding one-day license. Tom, you're fired, and you just joined us. All right.
Too soon.
Too soon.
Too soon.
All right, I will fix that as well.
So do we?
So I think.
Make a motion?
Yeah, I think you can say, you could make a motion as amended.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the policy regarding one-day liquor license to sell alcohol beverages as adopted by Board of Selectmen on, I'm going to change the date, on June 6th, 2022. Select Board, and with the following modifications, we're going to change the, the line to Select Board and under A, we're going to change the wording to any public or private event held on private property and list out five. The five what?
No.
No.
Why don't we have Tom make the motion?
Since he's got.
Since he's got it in front of him, yeah, since he's real timing.
Good idea, better idea.
So I will make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license with the amendments of fixing Board of Selectmen at the top of the policy and then adding language in section A to include any event requiring a one-day liquor license in accordance with the respective MGLs, which I will list out, including any public or private event on public property.
Perfect.
Second.
All right, Jamie, second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it.
Uh, just a note, they're getting some doubling of the audio on Zoom, I don't know if, if, I don't know if the microphones are working and we still have Joe's computer on or.
I think we've got mic computer, mic here, speakers, so I think that's the issue.
My, my mic is shut off right now.
Okay, so it's not a new issue.
Not on me.
All right, at least they can hear it, I guess. All right, now we have discuss authorizing the town manager to sign one-day licenses.
This was not put on by the town manager. Just be clear.
So in the past, before our previous iteration of this board, it went through the town manager's office and was authorized to sign these unless there was some reason the town manager thought they needed to come before us. So, you know, open for discussion whether we think we want to keep it as it is or we want to amend our policy to have the town manager's discretion to, whether he needs to bring it to us or not.
So in, Joe, you want to say something?
Yeah, yeah, if, if it's, if I'm allowed.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, please.
The town manager didn't request this be on there, but since it was brought up by the chair, I'd, I'd say that there are a couple of things that I'd be happy to do, especially now that you have a policy that's in place that really clearly outlines what we're supposed to be approving. It makes it a lot, a lot easier for the town manager to make a decision because they've got that, we'd have that policy in place to support it. It also would allow us to have the flexibility to deal with kind of last-minute requests. For instance, somebody goes to the community house, they want, they want to have Uncle Tom's wake and they want to have alcohol served, but there's not going to be a select board meeting before the wake, you know? We should be able to accommodate folks like that. It'll also help us in marketing the patent homestead because currently we've, we've turned down a couple of birthdays and things that people had come in wanting to do, they were willing to get a, a caterer to serve the alcohol, but they didn't, they didn't want to wait, they didn't have time. So that would make our lives simpler on that end of things. Again, with the policy that you've just adopted, providing the, you know, the clout for the town manager.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I might agree, I think that the policy is clear enough where it's either, there's no room for error, it's either yes or no.
Yep.
Either have the requirements they don't. So I would just say that, that would be, I think the only thing I would maybe think, is a seat, does a seasonal one make more sense to come in front of us? Maybe.
Right, and I think, is, kind of my point would be if, you know, I would think that Joe would have the smarts to say if it's a seasonal license or some other event that is worth a second set of eyes or five more sets of eyes on, that he would bring it to us.
But I think it makes sense, we, I mean, we give Joe a lot of responsibility, I think this is not out of, out of character for what he would be managing for us in our absence, and I think with a clear direction now of the policy, just want them, and then, you know, my, my feeling's on the on file, on the.
On file.
I got you. I got you.
So I think it's a great idea.
Any other discussion, if anybody wants to make a motion, we can have further discussion or no motion, I don't want to force it on anybody, but I just had a thought about it.
Yeah, I'd move that we approve giving the town manager the authority to sign and approve one-day liquor licenses.
Further revised.
Further revised policy with the exception of.
Seasonal.
The.
Seasonal licenses.
Seasonal licenses.
Yeah. I second that.
All right, and I would just add to the discussion or any other reason he deems necessary?
Yeah.
Okay.
I meant to say that.
That's what Jamie said, he inferred it, so. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everyone, the motion carries.
So you mean we never talk about one-day liquor licenses again?
Unless we have to.
I drink, I drink to that.
Unless we absolutely have to.
We have to.
You've only got one on the next, the Iron Ox has withdrawn their application for one-day license.
Okay, so the next, we have approve.
And you could always, always just say, you know, we don't need to do this, Joe can do it now, but that's beside.
Yeah, we just have Joe, Joe do it now.
So, so per that statement, we have approve a one-day liquor license for, which one is the?
It's for the garden club at community house on, June 22nd.
And they did seem to submit full documentation.
Have it all, it's all here, it's not on file, it's in your packet.
I saw that. That's why the packet was 97 pages.
So we, do we want to just at least make a?
Just approve it since it's on our agenda.
Just approve it, right.
I make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for community house on June 22nd.
All right, a second by anybody?
Second.
Second by Caroline, okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, and then we have discuss creation of the Hamilton Environmental Impact Committee and I want to thank Bob and whoever else is on the. And I want to thank Bob and whoever else is on the Zoom tonight, if you can hear us through all of our double audio, for staying on so long. Caroline, you want to speak to this?
Yes. So first, yes, thank you to Sue and to Bob, and also Greg, who's here in real life. I R L, as the kids say. There is a draft in your packet. It's the old draft. We've had multiple meetings since the time that that was drafted, but I did want to sort of overview with you guys what the history of this was and where it came from. But also, while I have folks on the line, I know Bob and Sue, I met with Joe and with Vicki on Friday morning to just sort of talk to Vicki about, like, the sorts of projects that she can continue to work at a regional level without a regional committee. And she sent me a list that I thought was, was actually worth sort of listing here, which is, the current ongoing projects right now are the rooftop solar at the Hamilton Winham Library, which is obviously a regional consideration. They're scheduled to be installed this summer. Here in Hamilton, we have fast chargers going up at Patton Park. They were, back in Patton Park, they are grant and utility funded. There's HVAC efficiency upgrades at the public safety building. We're waiting to see, hear if we're going to get green communities funding for that. She has an ongoing project to research EVs for the municipal fleets across both towns, so she is doing regional informational gathering there. She knows that there's available grant funding, and she's also looking at operational success in other municipalities to present to both police chiefs. So that, again, is already happening without any, any input from us. The climate action plan roadmap, we applied for technical assistance through TAP and funding through M A P C in January. We're waiting to hear if that's been awarded. And that's a joint effort with Hamilton Winham and the Hamilton Regional School District. So again, Vicki's sort of playing that role as a, as a regional player. And then, she also handles the annual grant writing for the green communities programs, as well as the energy, energy saving projects within the municipalities. And I, I only mention that because I know that we had a long conversation about, like, who will have an eye to regional initiatives, and that's really a huge role that Vicki plays, is making sure that those things are sort of happening at a regional level. All that to say, after much conversation over the last two weeks, many meetings with many folks, our recommendation is that we create a commission in Hamilton, specifically an environmental commission that focuses on more closely, and that will be the revision that we'll make to this current charter going forward, that more closely aligns to the original charter of the CATS, which is really around renewable. I bet I have the notes here, y'all.
Will you spell out the acronym for the audience?
Oh, yes.
Climate action.
The Hamilton Winham Climate Action Team is the CATS. And their, their focus on energy efficiency, renewable energy, electrification of the fleet, and waste management and compost. So we're going to revise our town charter to be a little bit more closely aligned to that, but also pull in the municipal vulnerabilities study, so that we can ensure that when, if, or when a sister commission or committee is formed in Winham, they will be focused on the same specific areas, so that then Vicki has a better time sort of organizing priorities, priorities across those two groups. I know that was a lot to say, but that's sort of where we, we ended up after an exhaustive process.
Yeah.
But we do need to make amendments to this. This was a first draft, and it was sort of going in multiple directions based on multiple stakeholders, and we finally came, I think, to something a little better on Friday, but I had plans this weekend. So, there it is. Joe, did you have anything to add?
I think that, I'd, I'd say that as much as it was a long process, and Caroline had certainly had more meetings than I did, but she included me in a couple of them, which I appreciate. It, it was all a very positive process, as, as we said to the folks that we were talking with. Taking on these kinds of issues, climate, you know, trying to reduce our impact on the climate and the environment around us is very important to all of us, and to have activated people, residents who are, have a lot of energy to do this stuff is, is
Great.
Great. We're very, we're very excited for that and for the input that you've provided us. I think I told you, Greg, when I met with you, when we met with you, Greg and Bob and Sue last week, that, you know, my peers have been pushing for Hamilton to get involved, and I kept telling them, I need the populace to be behind it, because if it's just the town manager, nothing will get done. So this gives me the ability to jump in with both feet with those folks, and that, we're happy for that. So, that said, the board will put together their committee, and then I look forward to working with another board.
So with Caroline's comments and all her hard work, and Joe's, does anybody have any comments about the draft that's in front of us tonight?
Don't focus.
Caroline said not to review the draft.
I did.
Well, we can, we can kind of talk about it without talking about it all.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are pieces in there. I think really just getting to the buy-in between regional versus town-specific was a big part of the conversation, and then how closely we wanted to align to the, the Hamilton Winham Climate Action Team's original charter. I think we wanted to make sure that we weren't sort of just falling in line with what they had already done, because we did want to have a more town focus to it, which is where the municipal vulnerabilities study results come in.
Right.
And then with our waste management and compost being defunct, we want to make sure that that's sort of a pillar there. But I certainly welcome, folks, questions and comments and, and whatever else.
So are the, are the next, I mean, are the next steps for you to continue drafting the policy, and then for us to have more discussion about it?
Hopefully by the next meeting, in light of the conversations that we had last week, we'll have a charter that feels much more closely aligned to what we're envisioning and with, with goals and duties that, that are more aligned. They're all in there. I just don't think this is a very concise version of what we've been talking about, so I, I think it's a little difficult to navigate.
And to kind of lead into Jamie's question there with a little bit of follow-up, what's kind of your goal for tonight's discussion? Do you have a, a specific, what, what the outcome would be that you want to walk away with tonight?
I mean, I want to confirm with this whole group that the decision to, to not pursue a regional committee feels right to everyone here, and to talk through that. I know there are still, Sue's on the line. She has, she feels very strongly that a regional committee is, is the right way, and I want to make sure that voice is heard, and that if there's disagreement about that, we, we can continue to talk about it. So that would be the first, just, you know, ensuring that, that low town versus regional is the right direction, and that we agree that that's what we should pursue. And then, outside of the municipal vulnerability and the waste management, as well as sort of the intended charter of the CATS, there's not other considerations that we want to go into this draft for what this group should be focused on.
Gotcha.
Greg made some great comments about, you know, not wanting to boil the ocean, and, and the genesis of the CATS was really around literally not wanting to boil the ocean. Sorry, bad joke, climate joke, climate joke. But that, part of the, part of the reason the CATS has been so effective is that they are sort of myopic in what they're trying to achieve relative to climate action, and so we don't want to flare so much that the group, you know, has too many things that they can do, but we do have a couple of things that we need to fold in.
Right. And I think that, to that point, is why I feel that it's, it's fine that there's a Hamilton Winham CAT, but I think it should be a specific Hamilton group that does encompass the waste and the other items that are specific to us kind of personally and financially.
And again, they, both groups, if, if and when one happens in Winham, like, the energy manager works between the two towns and should continue to be a liaison between those two groups. And so if there are things that need a, a regional lens
We'll have that overlap.
We should have that overlap without trying to create another layer that would then have to work town by town.
I think that one of the things that we talked about in the meetings too, was that, you know, it's important that for a board or committee that's going to work on behalf of the town, it's important that they have a, a process for public input. They have to have open meetings. They have to be able to be subject to the open meeting law, post their meetings with agendas, get input from the public, not just from themselves.
Right. I think that's a great point.
That was one of our, our kind of reasons for wanting a Hamilton committee.
As far as the composition of the, I know there's the select more than for humans, but
Humans.
But are those humans going to have like specific qualifications? Is it going to be like an expertise assigned to each one? Like, we want someone with this type of experience or this type of background? It might be
I think, I think we can ask for it, but we can't demand it. You know, being, this isn't my first rodeo with, with forming a committee of any type. You really, I don't want to say you take what you can get, but in a sense, you take what you can get, as long as they're passionate about the mission statement and the charter for the group, you know, and they meet all the qualifications, you let them in. You know, and then they kind of learn a little bit on the job, and, and they, they fit their roles then. But we always kind of ask for it. It's great if you have this qualification. It would be wonderful if you had this qualification. So, I mean, that's the way I feel. I don't know everybody else.
And there seems to be enthusiasm in the community, I think, specifically because of the, the work that the CATS did around town meeting. Like, there are folks whose ears are perked, and, and there will be interest there. I think the specificity around, like, compost and waste management experience, I don't know how many compost and waste management experts are sitting around hoping to sit on a committee.
Right.
I would ask for it. I don't know if it's there.
Right, and I think part of being on a committee like this, you become an expert over time with the experience, because you're being able to get granular and diving deep into all the data, or whatever the grants are, et cetera, what's going on.
Yep.
I, I think Joe's point is an excellent one too. I mean, the, the point I raised earlier, but the fact that, that the minutes would be public meetings, they would have an agenda, you would have minutes so that you're not working in this kind of vacuum, or people are always wondering what you're doing, or thinking they're opposed to whatever they're trying to do. So it's all very much open and, and easy accessible.
I mean, I've said it maybe 30 times over the last two days, but I think there's also a PR issue with some of this stuff, and having a dedicated group that can, people know where to go to ask for the information, that's like aggregating information, dashboarding some of this information. It's in disparate places right now. Even Vicki sending that email about like all the things that are going on, I think, I think the visibility of a group in the town that people know they can go to, to make those sorts of suggestions is important.
All right, so back to Caroline's kind of original question. I mean, I voiced my opinion on, and Joe's, I think, said the same, and Caroline, I think, is in the same boat, that it's a, a town committee instead of a joint regional committee. Does everyone feel that's the scope that we're looking at?
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, I think just for practical reasons.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Dealing with municipalities.
Yeah, it is, it's a little bit of a different situation. And what was the second part? Just the, the, I apologize if I forget what the second
No, that's okay. And, and this might be too, too outside of the energy efficiency, renewables, electrification.
Oh, if we've missed anything.
Yeah, if there was any other area that we feel, I mean, renewables is obviously the big one that covers
Right.
You know. And then, I, you know, I have said this before, I think we keep the school out of it. I think they're their own autonomous being, and they can do more faster if we don't include them. But, you know, if there's a, you know, a glaring issue that we haven't seen that needs to be included as a part of the charter, and you can, you know, email it to me after, but
I'm trying to think of, as far as, you know, overall environmental impacts. We have our mass vulnerability plan that covers a lot of kind of things. I would assume we're going to include all that into it, plus our compost and waste removal.
Could you read the four again?
Yes. Energy efficiency, renewables, electrification of the fleet, waste management and compost, and the mass vulnerability
Plan.
Plan.
Hmm.
Fleet.
If you just, you got to come right up since we're live here.
Who you are and where you live.
And just introduce yourself and your street address.
Greg Horner, Greg, is this thing on? Yeah, Greg Horner, Home Street, 28 Home Street, Hamilton. I feel like there's been a couple of versions of some of those subtitles, and one of them was clearer about the need to not only pursue energy efficiency in the, the buildings, which is, is the first priority, but also to be looking at moving towards electrification. So, for example, shifting from a gas-powered heat, gas-powered heating system towards heat pumps or geothermal. And there's examples of other schools, and like the new police department in Beverly runs on geothermal. So, those options should be considered when it comes time for heating systems. So, I think that's something that doesn't fall under electrification of the fleet, it doesn't fall under energy efficiency or renewables, but should be in there in one of those.
That's great. So, yeah, if we just broaden electrification, does that work in your mind? Or does it need to be a sixth? Does it need its own bullet?
No, I don't think it needs itself.
It's kind of a
Next to, to all those, arguably it's under energy efficiency, it can be more efficiently.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you can wordsmith something that's other, other, less environmentally impactful
Yep.
Sources of energy. You know, I don't know how to wordsmith it, but I think it's something like that. I think the geo, the geothermal is kind of a different category-ish.
Geothermal would fall under renewables, right? I mean, it's renewable energy sources like solar and wind, as opposed to being
Yeah, true.
Be created.
Yeah.
So, it kind of fits that category.
Systems rely on a lot of electricity, so you're shifting from one
Right.
If you could just, Greg, I'm sorry to bother you, but you just got to stand up to the mic.
A lot of those systems, like heat pumps, for example, and geothermal rely on a lot of electricity to run in general.
From the systems, right.
So you're just shifting from one, one source of fuel or carrier to another, and depending on how that electricity is produced, well, is it, is it a better climate impact or not?
Right.
So if that's a coal-powered electricity, you know, that's not great. Our hope is that over time, the grid becomes greener, and, and then your, your, your heating system or whatever is, is running on solar instead of on coal.
Right, you're running your geothermal pump on a coal-fired plant, right? Is it negating or breaking even, or what? And you're hoping that the renewable will come in time?
And all those trade-offs are something that has to be, those are all what's considered in all the nitty-gritty of these decisions and processes. And so, I think one of our goals is just to keep raising those opportunities. Oh, we're getting a new roof on the public safety building. Well, that's a time to talk about solar, those sort of things. And there's a lot, there's a lot of opportunities. I said at one point, there's like, I said to actually someone in the schools, there's like a thousand things we could potentially do together. We just, our, our job is to find the like, you know, handful that we can do each year
Right.
That make the most sense.
All right. Do you need any other discussion from us?
No, but I welcome your thoughts separately if you have them.
Anybody else on the board want to add anything?
No, I think it's a good start.
And, and Bob, I know you and, and Sue have been on the line. Do you, you guys want to add anything since you spent all this time waiting?
Bob's lit up.
Bob's lit up, but we can't hear him.
Oh, do you need to raise your volume again?
Let's try that.
We're having some technical difficulties. Bob, if you are trying to talk, we're trying to figure it out.
Sue, you
They can't hear me either, I don't think.
No, we can hear you both.
Hear you now.
We can hear you now.
Now we can.
Okay, I was, I was only, sorry, Bob Knowles, 201 Main Street, Winham. I was only going to add, Caroline, that from our discussion with you and Joe last week, you know, Hamilton Winham Regional School District is, is the third entity in all this, and obviously incredibly key piece, critical piece in, in all four of the buckets that, you know, that we're talking about here from the original warrant article that was passed in the year, April 2nd. So, you know, and we're meeting with, with Eric Tracy and Tom Gary tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM to basically talk about their custom version of the resolution. So, they're on, they're on board with all this, and Vicki is, is, you know, is part of all this as well, obviously. So, I just wanted to mention that there are three entities, and it includes the regional school district. One last thing, energy efficiency, that's an incredibly broad term that, as Greg just said, can really encompass a lot of different things. And, you know, electrification is, is part of it. And obviously, you know, so Hamilton Winham Regional School District, they're using ad software through Spur Regan, one of our members, and, and that's going to be an incredible help. So, I'll stop there.
Thanks, Bob. And I, I think it, sorry about the double audio here, but I think Sue, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I would. Thank you very much. Caroline, you, you've converted me.
Oh, Sue!
I know. I didn't, I didn't want you to go another. I knew you were so worried. No, I, I, that's what I said the other day. I think, obviously, you guys have thought it through, and it makes logical sense, and we discussed the Hamilton Environmental Impact Committee may be meeting with the Winham Environmental in all the other at certain times. So, I think there will be cooperation, and how they manage it is up to each town. Secondly, could you still hear me? Secondly, could you still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
You sound like you're coming out of the 2097 century. The second, the only other thing I want to add to what Bob and Greg said was that under.
Now we dropped you.
We lost you. We lost you, Sue.
Sue, you were talking, you only wanted to add, and you went.
It was going to be good, too, I could tell.
I actually think the Zoom is frozen.
Yeah.
Oh.
You're right.
Yep.
It's us.
Oh, yeah.
We're frozen.
That's us.
It says. Yeah, why don't you just go right to the mic and put it on the mic there.
And I'm trying to connect them. Well, let's try this. Go ahead.
Me?
Yeah, you, Sue, hit it.
Oh.
Sue Petrolia from Wenham.
Oh, my gosh, I have to turn them off. I'm getting way, a ton of reverb. Just tell them what I said, that's all.
Perfect.
I don't know what you said.
Recording in progress.
Okay.
Sue, I don't know what you said, so you're gonna have to, why don't you tell me and I'll.
So excited.
She's aligned with Hamilton Wenham having their own communities as long as they meet and collaborate.
Yep, yep.
Joint chiefs. Yep. Yes, yes. Waste management, it's not just about recycling, it's, has to also be about reducing. And plastic recycling is a highly flawed system. If anyone's read about it, it's maybe a shell game. But important to be focused on reduction.
Right.
Yep. Did I get it?
Yeah, and just kind of not to belabor this since it's getting late, but I think maybe part of the, Caroline, when you're writing up kind of the next iteration of the kind of charter and stuff, maybe there's something in there about working collaborative with Wenham and the school system, you know, and some, maybe even some check-ins, like a certain times of year or something like that. So, there's a regular kind of a collaboration. And then to the point about the recycling, we've kind of always have been kind of striving towards that. In fact, just recently, we signed, what was it, for the, for the packaging stuff, to reduce the packaging from companies and stuff like that, so.
Supportive bills.
Supportive bill that's through the House right now. So, we're moving kind of in that direction, so. Alright, good stuff.
Awesome.
Producer responsibility.
Producer responsibility legislation, right?
Tosh Blake, Sagmo Street. It sounds like a good whole project and everything. I just, this is probably just a technical thing that's way forward in the future, but I think when you talk about solar battery storage is an interesting option, and I think that might be another part of the electrical thing. Just, I think, if we were setting up charging stations and things to do batteries, I guess be careful, this is more for, I guess, a safety standpoint, but you don't want to maybe have them too close to Town Hall, or it's certain sort of sensitive buildings, because, just because there's a fire hazard, like if those batteries are great for storing, but if they start cooking off, it's extremely hard to put them out from a firefighting perspective, so that's just more of a technical thing that probably has nothing to do with the broader thing you're talking about, but just came to mind, so, thank you.
No, I think that's good food for thought, Tosh, because there is issues of battery storage and stuff like that with different situations. Alright, up next we have review and discuss, oh, sorry. Oh, Virginia, I'm sorry, go ahead if you want to come on up, I apologize. You raised your hand and then I made you pause, so.
Name me, Virginia Cookson, 318 Forest Street. Kind of give you some feedback, if you don't mind, and some questions. Besides having a very short memory, not remembering the abbreviation you already used, I won't ask you again because I might forget it again, but I might actually see it in writing on the minutes and then I'll remember, how's that, okay? The first thing is you mentioned charter, and it crossed my mind that this whole committee and the ideas seem to happen like that. I can't slip it, okay? And it couldn't have actually happened like that because so many things started falling into place so fast, it had to have been organized prior to that, prior to even hearing about it in town. So, and not just our town, of course, many towns around here, okay? But why would, what do you need a charter for?
So, to create the committee that will help assess and make recommendations about how we, as a town, can become more environmentally conscious.
Okay. Then, secondly, of course, I'm thinking about the regional, would the, regional be in a way over the local in collecting, being connected to all the different local ones? Would they be putting pressure on individual towns, including us, of course, to do things a certain way or to do things, by putting pressure on the people to do it? I mean, some people will not be able to, even if they want to, put, use solar or anything. You can't use wind because you can't put a windmill up high enough, because if you did, it would be a hazard to the airport, you know, in a short distance way. And as far as solar, I for one happen to have a house that if you, I invite all you, try to find me on Google, Google Map. You won't see my house because of the trees. And you say, well, maybe you'll have to cut the trees down. Well, the trees, most of them, are not on my property. It's on a town property, it's on my neighbor, beside me, it's my neighbor across, a neighbor diagonally, and I don't really want to have trees cut down just so I can put solar, okay? But that's, that's the second thing. And I'm just thinking, I'm just going to be one of, well, like, a many people, maybe not too too many, but there'll be many people. So, then, looking at the committee, you said that, I want to quote you, but I'm sorry, I can't. You said that you felt that you had the general community's support. How did you figure that one out? Most, there's no newspapers around anymore. There's no way to know you even exist unless somebody seeks to, seeks out the town information and goes from, you know, the town website and then connects with others. You really have, you have to look for things, to find things about this town anymore. I'm sorry, it's just, that's the way it is. It used to be that we had the Hamilton Wenham Chronicle, at least we got a few articles in here, and there was an opportunity to say, oh, we've got something new going on in town, look, and you'd get more feedback. So, that concerned me. And the last thing that concerns me is, though I happen to think I'm green, I'm not quite as green as you are, I guess, okay? And so, I think educating as many people so that they can feedback to things like, well, you know, I can't go green for this or that. What's going to happen if the town decides that, you know, this is what we want the people to do, and they'll do to us what the state does to the town and the federal government does to the states, and they, they push you. There are very, there are many ways that, as you know, okay, that you can get pressured down, down, down. And if it gets to, gets to that point, I think you're going to end up creating enemies.
I would say, Virginia, that kind of go back to your
Yeah.
second question there about community
Yeah.
buy-in
Yeah.
or information on how this got started. We had a kind of grassroots group between the two communities get together, and then we went to town meeting with kind of a proclamation to start the charter for this group. So, town meeting is passed. It, not all 8,000 people showed up to town meeting, but the people that showed up made the decisions.
Yes, yeah, I agree.
And then, and then when we formed this committee, you know, you're talking about, how does that kind of trickle down to information and outreach? The job of that committee is to pitch it to the selectmen and then do that as one of their duties, to spread information so that when it comes to town meeting, that people can make an educated decision. It may be a decision in favor of it, it may be a decision not in favor of it, but that is how our town meeting works. So, nothing will be forced on you unless, I guess, unless town meeting votes for it, so. So, show up.
This resolution was more towards impacting the way the town as an entity, as a municipal organization.
It's not going to do your, it's not going to force you to have solar on your house, it's going to have us put solar on our buildings as a municipality. So, it's not going to affect you, it'll affect you, but it won't be directly to your property.
It's, it's, it's a start.
Right.
For the rest of us.
Right, and hopefully that it encourages.
They'll look at it and say, that's a great idea, I think I'll do it.
Exactly. We want to encourage people to follow suit and do their part.
Alright. But I guess the only thing I would emphasize of anything I said was, I see it as being hard, not just for you, okay? But I see it hard to get the information out to a large number of people, okay? I don't know the solution, if I did, I'd give it to you. But I think that's a, that's.
I think that's our
Thank you very much for.
common, constant problem, so.
Thank you.
We're well aware of it.
Robin Davis has her hand up.
Robin, did you want to speak if we can hear you?
I'm gonna have to try this.
Robin, we're trying to turn up the audio, so if you can give it a shot.
She's not even lighting up.
Robin, are you there?
Ms. Davis? Robin, can you hear us?
Can anybody hear us?
Can anybody hear us?
Alex, can you?
Alex, can you hear us?
Does the chat work?
I disabled chats when we started the meeting by our new policy.
Alright, well, if we can connect to Robin at some point, we'll entertain it. Alright.
Yeah. Robin, if you're there, you can email me.
She's lit up now.
Try her thought.
But she's still muted, so that's not going to help her.
She needs to unmute.
Robin, can you unmute on your end? This is not working out.
I don't know what happened.
Alright, well, Robin, if you, if you want to email one of us, you certainly can, or if we get to connect with you before the meeting, we'll listen to you. Next up on our agenda is to review and discuss.
Who's talking? Jack, are you there? Robin?
Now they're muted again. Anyone frozen again? No, no, we're not frozen, okay.
No, I was flailing my arms to make sure.
Alex, can you hear us?
That is not the face of a man who hears us.
No, that is not the face of a man that hears us.
Alex, can you hear, can you hear us?
I can, I can hear you. There's like really strange feedbacks going on.
Ah, that was good, though.
There's a joke in there somewhere.
Well, we can at least hear Alex, I guess, even though it's goofy, so.
Yes, we can hear you. Yes.
Okay.
This is the first I can hear you now, so are we talking about ARPA stuff now?
We're, we're close, but not there yet, so bear with us for another couple of minutes here.
Oh, goodness.
Turn that down again. Apologies to everybody on Zoom. Technology is not our friend tonight. Alright, so our next up is to review and discuss the new display of flags on town property policy. And so, Jamie has gracious enough to take another stab at this, and Jamie, do you want to speak to this to start?
Sure. So, yeah, I mean, I've paid fairly close attention, I guess, to the Supreme Court decision in the Shertliff versus City of Boston case, and and then, I don't know, I guess did sort of some additional looking into it, and as I said in the email, it's in the packet, this isn't, the policy that I have put forward here is mostly based on a publication and model policy from the League of Oregon Cities. And frankly, like, there's a, you know, again, there's actually a whole discussion on it, and then there's multiple policies that they put out there as, that had been adopted, including they actually had San Jose. And the reason I bring up San Jose is that is actually the one that the Supreme Court mentioned in the Shertliff case. So, that's where this essentially comes from. And I really did not change much to that. And that doesn't mean we should adopt it that way. All I'm saying is, I didn't take a lot of my own liberties. So, if you, if you don't like it, you can blame, you can blame that, alright? It obviously reinforces what is the main issue that was in Shertliff, which is, which we've discussed quite, quite a many time here at the Select Board, which is that the decision whether to fly a flag is government speech. That doesn't, like, we could decide. We don't want to fly any flags, but that, the point is, that's our decision. If we just want to fly the American flag, we can decide that, it's government speech. We could decide to fly a lot of other flags, as long as we are, and I'll quote from the, you know, case that, like, we're taking an active role in saying, yes, this is a message that we, as the town, want to communicate. And where Boston went wrong was they literally, until the one flag that was proposed by the camp constitution came up, they had pretty much accepted anything, did not have a policy.
Right.
Whoever wanted to fly anything could. So, we, as a town, have not done that, and that is illustrated in all of the minutes of the many, many discussions we've had
Right.
about whether we're flying a flag or not. And so, this policy, essentially, this draft policy encapsulates that. People can still disagree with, you know, with the decision about a particular flag, they can still, they can disagree with this policy. But I think if we're gonna fly, unless we're gonna have a policy that's just Section 1 of this draft policy, I think it should say something close to this, that it is the Select Board's decision whether to fly a flag, and we will, and then, yeah. So, anyway, you guys can read it, and it's in the packet for the public as well.
Can you put on screen?
I can't, but Joe probably can. I will do that.
And so, and to kind of add to Jamie's, in his email, if you've read it, it's, he also talks about the POW MIA flag and learning that it is not, I forget how you put it, specifically sanctioned, right? So, it's a.
It's not specifically required.
Required, that was the word I was looking for. And so, you know, that was, whether we wanted to include it in our policy is is part of what's always there, which we have in the past, so I would kind of assume we would keep it that way, but.
Sorry?
I can only show you, all it says is the standard pro forma of when we.
You're not really missing anything at the top.
Policy name, accept it, you know, this is the form, the template.
The, yeah, so the POW MIA flag is the, is one that I did not address in this policy, I just mentioned it in my email.
Right.
The only other sort of self-criticism of it may be is that, right, there are, we've historically just done the one out here at Town Hall and one at Patton Park. There are other flags on town-owned property.
Cemetery, et cetera, right.
We may want, I don't know how, that might need to be affected by the policy.
To designate which flag poles are all of them, kind of a thing. And that could also be under the discretion of the Select Board.
I think that would all be under the discretion of the Select Board.
Thoughts, comments, if you've read through it?
I mean, so, big picture, right? I like that it's simple, it's one page. It protects us, whether we try to fly a flag or not, at least we have a policy, right?
Yeah.
There's probably only two things that, I don't know if I would approve this or not, but there's two things that I would change.
Okay.
If I was considering improvement, one would be that, I don't know, I'm still in favor of sort of Select Board or a town board or committee. I think you could still make it open to, as long as it's a town board or committee, right? It doesn't need to be just Select Board, it could be.
Who recommends it, is that what you're saying?
Item 2, Section 2, Item 2, it says, "The Select Board only shall consider, shall only consider if the request is made by a member of the Select Board," or I would say it needs to be a consensus of a board or committee, right? At the recommendation of a consensus board.
A vote, a vote of a board of committee.
I don't want you to have one person come, it needs to be like a.
So, if the, say, the conservation committee had a flag that they want to fly, they could bring it as a request to the Select Board.
If it was a consensus of that board.
If it was voted on at that board.
If it was voted on.
Correct. In a favorable action, of course.
And then the other thing was, what was the other thing? And then the other thing was, what was the other thing? I don't know, I'm forgetting what the other thing was. Come back to me.
All right, Tom, anything from you?
I had, um, I was actually gonna have the same comment as Bill on, um, who should be able to bring it, but other than that, I mean, I think it looks good.
Oh, no, sorry, I liked that it was, sorry, I like, I wanted to, the other thing I wouldn't change, but I liked that the fact that it was short and then the fact that it was, it's a, like any policy, like you said, Jamie, it's, we were voted to, you know, we're elected officials to sort of set policy. It can be changed anytime, at any point. It's not, it's there's no sort of, it's not forever, this policy.
Right.
It's a moment in time, to reflect a moment in time, right? So, our goal is to protect, is to create longevity to policies, but that's not always maybe be the goal.
Right. You know Jamie Soss Caroline?
No, I think this reflects the conversations that we've been having over the last couple weeks about this. Um, I agree with keeping it government speech and, and letting the say happen in this room.
So, with that being said, do we think there's any other considerations other than the changing of Section 2, Number 2? Do we want to, I mean.
Can I make a remark here?
Yes, please.
I'd recommend, given the, the town's, uh, the town's well-stated failing over the years of, of support for veterans, that you would add in, that even though the state hasn't made it required to put the POW MIA flag.
Yeah, thank you for saying that.
Add it in here that it, that it will, will be held, it will be flown right back.
I meant to say that earlier when I talked about.
All the time, right, right?
Yeah.
That's, which, yeah, no, I'm.
Yeah.
I'm in agreement with that, I'm.
Okay, so, so let me, let me backtrack a little bit here, and thank you, Joe, for saying that, because I meant to say it earlier when I mentioned it, but I didn't get to that part of it. Um, so, with the Section 2, Number 2, changing that it is not just the Select Board, it could be, um, any other board or committee with, voted in favorable action to bring it to the Select Board, and then I guess where would we fold in the POW MIA flag into the policy?
Well, we do, sorry, does it list the American flag in there?
Uh, it's Section 1.
Oh.
So, we have Section 1, Section 2, the POW MIA, MIA flag, and then Section 3, commemorative flag?
I think, well, I think P, as of now, right, I mean, POW MIA flag is a commemorative flag, so we would put it under there.
Okay.
So I think we, I mean, we could say, I'd say we put it either first or last.
And how would we, do, do we, I, I guess, here's the kind of the follow-up here, it's getting a little late, but do we, do we want to wordsmith those items right now and move on with this, or do we want to look at it a little bit and then come back next meeting?
I, I'd be joking, this is the first time I've seen this, was just this week, so let me digest it. I would probably abstain if we voted tonight.
That's, well, that sounds like a member using his prerogative to table.
I didn't say, nope, I didn't say those words.
He didn't say it out loud.
Those words. Give you my opinion.
What's, what's the general consensus? I mean, anybody can table it, and it's tabled, so you can always exercise that right. It's clearly not our first reading of this, but.
Hi, Greg.
I could go either way on it. Um, I mean, I, I'm comfortable the way it is. I mean, I would, if I was gonna recommend changing, I was trying to think, we could even do Section 1, the American flag, and then do Section 2, being a commemorative flag, just say POW MIA flag, and then Section 3, other commemorative flags, so we could still kind of keep the same theme of different sections, um, and then kind of keep, and that would just add, be adding one section and not necessarily wordsmithing too much, but.
I, I think that's a good idea.
I'd suggest maybe making Section 3, 3, the POW MIA 1.
And why's that?
Oh, just, just 'cause Section 2 outlines kind of what our policy is around commemorative flags, and then Section 3 would sort of implement that for, regarding the, permanently regarding the POW MIA, and if we do decide not to vote on this tonight, we could probably, we could probably wordsmith something about why we're doing that.
Yeah. Okay. Joe?
I, could you add, so, to me, you, you referenced in your email, Jeremy, that the federal government does require the POW MIA, MIA flag to be flown below the US flag on, on federal properties. We could, taking a key from there, you have Section 1, "Flags shall be displayed in accordance with federal and state statutes and regulations," you could include a second section there that says, "This includes the POW MIA, MIA flag that is authorized by the federal government to be flown on federal flag polls," and just say.
Yeah.
We will, we will, we will follow.
We will honor that.
Federal guidance on, on that flag. Or something like.
Lawyers in the room, what do you think?
That's, um. I, I'm fine with that. I.
Yeah, works for me.
All right, so back to my previous question. Do we want to take the time to wordsmith it right now, or do we want to use that word and come back?
I'm not weighing in on that.
I mean, the, the one change that we're asking is just to make sure that the MIA, the POW.
And to add other boards and committees can, can make.
And add that other boards and committees can do that.
It's probably.
How are your typing fingers?
Good.
Did there need to be a change about making sure that all flags are in, uh, under the discretion? I, I wasn't sure if we needed to add anything to the, we, we talked about not just Patton Park and Town Hall, but other flags, does that need to be addressed here?
I think it's.
Or is it, I mean, I.
I think it's kind of unwritten.
Yeah, it's just kind of assumed, yeah.
I don't think it needs to be spelled out.
Yeah, I think that's.
We have jurisdiction over all the flag polls in town, we can deem whichever ones.
And, and, and each, and each time that you decide to vote on a commemorative flag, you can determine where it will fly.
Yeah, I agree. So I think the wording can stay the way it is.
I think it's fine the way it is.
Yeah.
Well, I don't want to lock us into something that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it, say, say we put another flag poll up in Patton Park or something like that, then, then we've got to change the policy and, and say, oh, well, now we're just gonna do it here, or we're gonna do it here and there. It gives us a little bit more flexibility.
Yeah.
Is there any reason Town Council needs to look at this?
I think that he'd probably cry if you asked him to look at another flag policy after all. We've put him through the last six months.
He did, he did weigh in multiple times on the other one.
Previous iterations.
And, again, the idea is just to be clear about it, be in government speech and.
Just to take the proactive stance that it's your prerogative and you'll exercise it when you wish to, that's.
And this is modeled after the specific one referenced by the Supreme Court, so I think, I think we're safe.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm comfortable wordsmithing and, and moving on if others are, but if folks need more time, that's.
We're also agreeing.
What's time to a hog?
All right, so I can't make the decision. Does somebody else want to make a motion or a table? Or I should say amend, make a motion and amend, and then, however we want to do it. I am able to all the options.
I will make a motion to approve the Town of Hamilton flag policy with the amendments of adding other boards and committees that can recommend a commemorative flag, as well as adding in Section 1 language around.
Can I pause it right there before you go on? With the other boards and committees with a unanimous, or not unanimous, with a positive vote, right?
With a unanimous positive vote.
I don't think it needs to be unanimous, but I think it just needs to be a positive.
A positive vote out of the committee, uh, and then adding language within Section 1, referencing the POW MIA flag will be flagged in accordance with state and federal law, and I think that's it.
Federal law, right?
Federal law.
Because the state law, the state didn't pass it, but it was federal law.
Federal law.
All right.
Second.
Second, all right, and I kind of, a discussion now, I mean, we've kind of had it, but Jamie, are you gonna edit?
I can, yep.
Okay. And then, um.
However, it is, looking up the federal statutory reference to the POW MIA might take me a little bit of time.
Okay, that's fine.
So, I'm not gonna get that in there.
So, I'm trying to think it, with the motion that Tom had just made, if we, if we want to add to it. I'm, I'm trying to think of how to say it, you know, we want to make sure when he does the edits that it's what we want.
Yeah.
You know, but I don't want to, I want to approve it, but I don't want to have it, yeah, what condition can we put on it?
Let's see if there are any comments, then we can talk about it. Public comment?
Public comment. I know Robin still has a hand up, but I don't think we can hear her, so. So Tosh, you can come to the podium.
Robin, what, she's frozen, or?
I don't, we couldn't hear her, so.
We'll, we'll try and reach her again after Tosh speaks, I'll try her one more time.
I haven't seen you guys in a while. Uh, Tosh Blake, Sagamore Street. Uh, so I guess it looks like, you know, it's still in, had final, final draft form yet, but it looks like you're going with the, um, the rationale that if it's government speech, then that's what it is. Um, you know, I do have some maybe caveats to that, I don't know if that would fully protect the town from a lawsuit in the future. Uh, the, the Boston versus Shertliff case had certain, certain specif, specifics, let's say. Um, maybe Hamilton is different, just how the flag thing came about in Hamilton. Um, one thing I'd like to remind, uh, you probably all have read your code of conduct, as you, you have a Select Board Code of Conduct. Um, just like to read a couple things that might be pertinent to this uh, flag issue. Um, this is from the, uh, town website. Um, the first section pertains to a member, if you're a member of the, uh, Select Board, in relation to the community. So that's the first section, maybe the most important section. Um, and there are certain lettered items. Um, Letter D is, remember that he or she represents the entire community at all times. Now, this may not be applicable to certain mundane things, like a liquor license, say if you want to give someone a liquor license, the neighbor objects, you're gonna have to decide if, whether or not, you know, give a liquor license. In politics, it's kind of different. I mean, if you're, you're saying what the town's values are, and you, you think you have the authority or the moral or authority to do that, that might be in conflict with, um, that line there, representing the entire community. I think I saw at the last meeting there were some people rather not agreeing with your flag decisions, and there are probably some others, I think, I know you've gotten emails and such, that other people don't agree. There may be a lot of indifferent people, too, but, um, but, uh, I think that's a very heavy responsibility for any board, and certainly at this level of town where you want to have, you know, trust in government, your government, basically doing the basic functions, a government is responsible for, getting into sort of, I don't know, preaching or moral sort of instruction and raising a flag, it may be a small gesture, but it could be a precedent that gets you guys as a board and town in general into business you really shouldn't be in, which is politics, in partisan politics. Even if you don't see it as partisan politics, you may say it's, you know, human rights or whatever it is, but it's identitarian politics, and, you know, there's, I don't think there's any way around that. Now, the only way around that, if you want to have those kind of flags, is do it for everybody, but if you're gonna pick a certain side, it, it's in violation of that. Also, letter E on the Code of Conduct, "Accept the role of a member is a means of unselfish service, not to benefit personally or politically from his or her board activities." Now, politically is not defined, you know, it could be political favors, this and that, but politically is a broad definition. Uh, the way I see it, the flags that have been approved, it goes to one political side, shuts out another political side, and the reasoning given for picking certain flags is pretty circular logic. It wasn't, it didn't make sense. You know, you could argue that some flags are more ambiguous than others, but I don't know if any, any of you can all identify, or the general public, which stripes on the Pride flag mean exactly what? They all have a certain meaning. That's a, that's a cer, that's a version of a flag that's evolved very rapidly in recent years, so the reason given that it's clear what that means didn't make sense. I think it was just a kind of rationalization to approve that flag, and the same, and other flags were not, like my flag for the Gadsden flag was given, well, it's ambiguous and the public might not know what it means or not agree with it. Same, same applies to the flags that are approved. So, with those two things, those are, in my opinion, two Code of Conduct violations that's been going on since 2020, when the first flag went up, I think without a vote, and then an immediate, um, moratorium went in, that was kind of a selective moratorium, and was used for viewpoint discrimination, basically, against, you know, flags that were requested, not requested, and not, um, uh, put up. Um, yeah, and just, just as a, I guess, some background, this is a thing that's been going, discussion about these flags in other communities has been going on in Massachusetts and other places, and different towns have taken different approaches and have gotten different, you know, they're legally all over the place, you know, just taking Martha's Vineyard, for instance, there was a couple things where, one town of Chilmark, uh, they decided just not to fly anyone's flag but the American flag, and the reason is they didn't want people fighting over different flags, different groups saying, hey, how come my flag isn't up? How come the boards, you know, putting up those other groups' flags, which is pretty reasonable, uh, reason not to fly, you know, certain flags, if you're going to only fly some. Um, Oak Bluffs, um, somewhat, you know, a little bit, sort of amusingly, or, or I don't know if you look at it amusingly, but they had already approved a Pride flag, and, and then this, this Supreme Court ruling came down. I think they've flown the Pride flag the previous year, 2021. The, the Martha's Vineyard NAACP wanted to fly a flag commemorating Juneteenth. Oak Bluffs denied that, saying, and basically on their Town Council, that if you start applying, approving new flags, or coming up, that they might get sued. So, maybe you're kind of skirting that with the, the government speech thing, but in the Shertliff case, in the Supreme Court case, and, uh, Justice Alito's concurrence, he kind of gave a caveat. He agreed with the, obviously, the outcome against Boston, but he warned against the possibility of the perception, at least, and of private speech disguised as government speech, meaning maybe somebody here knows somebody who wants a certain flag, and, you know, it could be somebody from the Hamilton Human Rights Coalition, which I'm sure some people here are probably, you know, close to and know people in. They want a certain flag on a certain day, now, they can request it if somebody they know on the board, and that person on the board is gonna say, okay, well, I'll bring it up as if it's my, my idea, and if the word's going around, that maybe this person won the flag and they got their flag up through the, somebody they knew on the board, that looks, that's really, is it really the board's speech, or is it a private citizen who had a poll on the board that maybe not everyone in town has? So that could be a legal, bit of legal exposure, if you could, you know, through discovery, say, well, well, we're all the communications with somebody on the board, and how do they exactly come up with deciding to want a certain flag? It may not be just that person's decision, it could be somebody in town, and then it's, you'll end up with viewpoint discrimination again, where it's some private speech is, is prioritized, all the other people's speech, which I think is definitely not a good thing. So, I would remind you to remember your Code of Conduct, and I'm sure you've all read it, I assume, and keep in mind, you really are, certainly in political sense, you know, not every little decision you're gonna make is represent everyone in the community, you're gonna have to take sides in more mundane matters, but for politics and identitarian politics, and, as you know me, I, maybe my theme, you probably realize, I'm against identity politics getting into our town's official business on all levels, you know, and I don't think it's a good thing. I think we see in the polarization in this country for all the way to the national level, it's getting pretty, it's just ugly, and I don't like to see any kind of political cheerleading of either side and using something we all pay for as taxpayers, property that's held in common by all of us, to preach one side or one point of view and exclude others. Now, you could, if you want us to be bold and tangy to say, okay, we're gonna let every flag fly, you could do that, there are all close, could be, you know, sort of problems with that, too, or you can just take the high road and sort of not be, you know, what some people will perceive is sort of factarian triumphalism or whatever, approving certain flags in a certain way. I just still think it's ethically wrong, and it could lead to some legal exposure to the town. I don't think you can rely just on the specific Shertliff case to say you're safe is government, just because it's government speech.
All right, thanks, Josh.
So that's, that's all I'd like to say, thank you.
Jack, I see you, you came down in person. Just introduce yourself as normal and.
Uh, Jack Davis, 57 Lower Street, and I do have some concerns about the flag policy, but I'll just stick to some procedural questions and issues. Number one, I just want to report that for the last 30 minutes, the, there was some technical problem with the Zoom audio. There was just this strange feedback, couldn't hear any speaker, so I really don't know what was said, so I think that would disadvantage other people in the town who may have been trying to, uh, listen to the debate, so that's the first thing. Uh, number two, I guess, in terms of due process and procedure, um, the question being, was the recommendation or the report that, uh, Select Board is considering, was that made available to the public in advance of the meeting?
Was filed with the pack, with the Packet Agenda, Agenda and Packet, uh, on the weekend, yeah?
Okay, so the Packet, thank you, all right.
It was in the Packet.
Number two, the other question would be, um, has the prior discussion been informed by the Town Council and, uh, his opinion relative to the Boston flag case and how that might affect discussions of viewpoint discrimination and the exposure of the town to legal liability for challenges to view, was the Town Council, did he give an opinion?
The Town Council has previously opined that we should adopt the policy that expresses governments, that, that establishes our government speech rights.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jack.
So.
All right, back. All right, back to us.
All right, so, so two things, one is thank you for speaking. I appreciate your thoughts and your comments, and I definitely listen to them and take them into account. I mean, that's, and that's, you know, part of our code of conduct also is 3D, where it says make decisions only after all facts on a question that have been presented and discussed, and I think that we've spent a long time reviewing all the questions. I don't think I'm going to personally benefit or gain from this, and I don't feel that I'm, I think that's a tricky one. That he or she represents the entire community at all times, I, it's, once again, the consensus of the community is our goal, but we can't always have everybody in the community agree with us, that would be sort of a funny way how we wrote it in our, in our, but once again, it's a code of conduct, it's not a.
Right, it's not a binding.
It's not a binding thing. Looking back at sort of what we've done, I think we've been very prudent over the last four or five years, we've only flown two other flags, as I'm aware, we've only flown the pride flag and the Juneteenth flag. And I think that if we're going to continue to fly those flags, we need to have this policy so that we aren't legally liable. This will prevent us from actually. And I think that if we're concerned about future boards wanting to fly a different flag, you know, they have the ability to, no matter what we do to change the policy, because that's the right of the board is to change the policy. So I think for where we are in terms of, I think we've been prudent and responsible on how we consider and what we've done. And my goal is not to change what we're doing, my goal is just to have a policy, to sort of have a policy in place to protect the legal integrity of what we're, what we're, have been voted in to do and, and by our bylaws, you know, allowed to do. So I, you know, so sort of thinking about that over the last few minutes, I think that the goal is not for us to change this and do something different we're doing for the last four or five years. And if somebody wants to, though, that's the right of the board that gets elected at that time.
Right.
It's a, it's a weird policy, we're just voting a policy in this moment in time, and this sort of, unless someone else wants to take it up in the future, so. That's sort of why I said.
So we've had a motion, it's been seconded, and my kind of question on the motion was, with the amendments that Jamie is going to put into the edits, do we want to amend the motion for some type of a, another review, or just are we confident in Jamie's ability to capture what we've talked about tonight?
I have, I have no further edits, I'm comfortable voting on it. I don't want the perception to be that we used a technical glitch to push it through, right? So in terms of the fact that it was not, you know, people haven't had a chance to hear what we're talking about, I would rather use my words now, ta, you know, come up with a new motion, table it and vote on it next time, because we did have a technical glitch tonight, and I don't want to use that as an excuse for somebody that published that we sort of were able to get something to where the public couldn't hear us talk, debate about. But I don't, I have no, I'm fine voting on it, I don't want to change anything other than what we changed.
Right.
But I think that we just vote on it next time with a clean copy.
No, I think, I mean, I hear your point, I see Tom over here nodding, and I couldn't see you guys, but I, I think that's a, a good point. That, I think we're all ready to approve what we've kind of amended tonight, but just kind of taking that one step for a little bit of time to do one more last edit of it to what we've said tonight and then bringing up the next meeting.
And I think we brought it first on the agenda, just so we're not having people sit here.
What's the general thought on that? Bill said that word, so.
I said the magic word.
Which, and I'm, just being for myself, I'm totally okay with it, but it sounds like you tabled it, which I think makes sense, right? I mean, we had, we had.
I think we've had plenty.
Technical glitches tonight, I, I don't know if people had trouble joining the thing, but.
We don't know, right?
Right.
I know a number of people dropped off in the last hour, so. Tells me they were having trouble hearing us.
So you said the word.
Correct, but before we, before we do that, we need to just make sure that we're comfortable with, we get the clean copy, because I would like, my, my goal is to vote any clean copy next time that has all these things taken into account. And these are all things we talked about before, we just got to make sure we get it right.
All right, just so, so we're all clear here, and I think we are, Bill is tabling the motion.
Right.
Based on a clean copy from our discussion tonight that we will vote to most likely approve next meeting.
And it'll get on the website.
Be first up on the warrant and on the website.
On what date, Joe, to get on the website?
Depends, it depends on Jamie, because he's got to do some case law review, I think, or something with the POW flag.
Re-look rotation.
Yeah, I mean, it won't take me long, like, it's already done, I don't know whether I really.
From now?
The statute is.
Okay.
For next Monday?
We can get it up, yeah.
On the 21st? Is our meeting the 20th?
Meeting's on the 21st.
I'm saying you'll post it on, by next Monday.
15th, the 13th.
We'll post it with the next packet, how's that? Just normal, normal order.
And then put it first on the agenda, please, just so we can move, move this.
All right, moving glacially ahead here. Open the warrant for special town meeting on October 1st, 2022, this should be a quick item, who's doing it? Who's making the motion?
Move that, we open the warrant for the special town meeting to be held on October 1st, 2022.
Who's second, second? All those in favor, I'm not even going to ask for discussion. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, we've done it. Check it off. And I would assume at our next, in upcoming meetings, we'll talk about possible warrant articles, et cetera.
There were lists of some in here.
There's a list in there.
There's a list in here, we're getting, getting like.
I don't think we need to talk about it.
I'm sensing you don't want to talk about it tonight.
You're sensing correctly. And then we have Alex, who is no longer online. Do we want to table this?
Table this too.
Oh, okay, okay, table to.
I don't have, I don't know if I can talk through the Town Hall financials right now, but Joe, unless you have something important that you think we should consider as we walk away.
I should, I, I'm going to apologize here, because I jumped ahead, we have discussion and possible vote on Gordon Conwell lease.
Oh, that we can do.
Yeah, I just, okay, good, I was hoping that.
It wasn't in the packet, so.
Yeah, the lease had been provided in another packet, so we can, we can, we can table a vote, I just would like to.
Let's have a discussion and at least a direction, it would be nice if we had a vote, but I, I understand if you haven't looked at the lease, that we won't vote on it tonight.
The lease is very favorable to the town.
Yeah, I mean, it's a dollar for three.
No money and they can, we can terminate any time.
Yeah.
We could terminate any time, we can, we can add in some language to protect ourselves if we move over there, they can't just sell the property and kick us out, I think we can add that in. What I'm looking really for in this conversation is some direction that you, the board still wants me to pursue that. And Sean and I talked a little bit about it earlier today, following an earlier meeting with some other folks, but it really comes down to if we're still going to pursue a Town Hall renovation, beginning with the fall STM, and another vote. We need to make plans to house our people, we do have a, we do have a state grant to be able to run fiber from this town building to the Pilgrim Hall on the, on the Gordon Conwell campus, so that building will be connected as, as good as this building is for anybody that's working there. We can talk about it in the future, whether you want to phase it and just do the second floor to start, and then everybody, when the Town Hall project gets brought, or you want to just send everybody over there to start. Those are all options, but we, I really need to start telling our staff, because there's a lot of concern about indecision.
Right, so the only risk is they sell quickly, and then the $30,000 or $40,000 investment that we made in moving over there, we have to move out, right, that's the only risk, other than that's a really good deal.
Right, and if I can give you kind of my earlier conversation with Joe and kind of the thoughts we've joined, I've kind of gone back and forth on this a few times over the last handful of months, and are kind of, well, my conclusion today was that we move forward the lease, pay the dollar, get, get our three-year lease, and around town meeting time, we move this whole building to the campus. And the reason for that is because I, my personal feeling is if we move the upstairs to the campus, we've, we've basically broken Town Hall in half, it becomes a management and continuity issue. And it's hard to manage both spaces.
Tim's the one who don't move over, correct? Thought that was the plan.
We could, we could talk about that, I think.
Thought proximity to the DPW yard was important, but that's, but that's a detail we can talk about later.
I think there's some workarounds with that, you know, maybe he has a little satellite office here, he's got a laptop, so he can be wherever, you know, maybe, and probably, I would say probably Pete that would be here more.
Than Tim?
Than Tim?
Yeah, makes sense.
Just kind of my take on it. But moving everybody there, it, it does a couple of things, it, we're, we're, whether it passes or not at town meeting, we can't really function in the building anymore with the way it is. So, you know, in, in hopes that it passes at town meeting, or we extend the funding and we work out some kind of matrix, which Alex, if he was here, we'd talk a little bit about, but we've made that step, we're going to have to move regardless of whether it passes or not, right? So getting everybody geared up to do that, and hopefully it will kind of show people that we're really serious, we can't use this building anymore because of ADA, fire suppression, code, everything, right? So moving people there will kind of hopefully let people know that we, we need to do something. And like you said, the lease is very favorable.
Let's do it.
Excuse my texting, I was just.
That's all right.
I'll, I'll get the, I'll discuss with Gordon Conwell, making sure that we have a little bit of language to protect ourselves in the event that they sell it quickly, but, and I'll let them know that we're looking at a fall timeframe to move in, that'll give us the summer, and then I'll have, I'll have the finalized lease in front of you for the next meeting.
Go.
Yep.
That's good. We'll table the Town Hall financial discussion till, and if we bring that to the front of the meeting next.
We can do.
Well, you can't have everything at the front, Phil.
I didn't say first, I said to the front.
So do you want to talk about it briefly, or do you just want to wait?
Real briefly, just, there are a number of other funds that we have access to that we can call on to try to, to try to contain some of the costs, the problem we're working with for, for the renovation of Town Hall, the problem we're working against is that because of inflation, because of supply chain issues, costs of construction has gone up. So we had, we had the previous, was around $6.8 million for the construction alone, we're estimating it's probably going to be closer to nine now. With, if we were to exhaust all the funds that we have access to, we probably have close to $8 million, including the CPC funds. But that'll leave us like having to pay back our stabilization funds and doing some things. And it would still leave us having to ask for about a million dollars from the voters or so. So we'll, we'll go over all that, I mean, that's just rough estimates based on what we're hearing. You know, it could be construction, if we go out to bid, could be more than $9 million, I'm hoping it won't be, you know. 50% more seems like extreme already.
The average has been 17%, so.
So if we had, if we had, we had $6.8 million construction cost before, times it by 20%, hopefully we'll be in that ballpark. But if we're going to discuss it next time, I mean, is FinCom gonna, or, I mean, this seems to be a question that's right up their alley, right? I mean, I think all these discussions start with the board, with the select board, and then we ask for input, and they certainly have the right to import to your decision-making, but even more so to the town meeting's decision-making. But we need to, you know, start somewhere.
Yeah, it starts, starts with us and then kind of trickles down to FinCom. Yes, their, their opinion will definitely be used, for sure, and input involved.
Well, and I just think, I mean, to me, my decision might be impacted by their opinion on the wisdom of using those different funds.
You're saying they should be here next week?
No.
Next meeting?
Not. I guess, I guess I'm asking that if, because this is potentially on the warrant in a few months that we just think about that timing.
And Alex can field a lot of those questions too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we've tabled it, so.
New business?
New business. I had something that I was going to add, and I talked to you about it, what was it? Do you remember? I'm going to put you on the spot here.
Five hours ago.
It's seven, seven hours ago, well, if I remember at all.
So obviously, we're going to do flag, Town Hall financials, and water, the water.
Water payment policy.
Policy, those are the three.
Oh.
Yeah, I remember.
Moving.
There was something I mentioned.
I can't remember what was.
Is that?
That was it, that was it, you remember it, because we talked about it on Sunday, moving the July meeting.
Moving July meeting, yeah, well, moving, I thought you were basically talking, well.
I'd like to cancel.
Not moving it, we were canceling, eliminating it.
So you currently have scheduled in July, a July 5th meeting and a July 20 something meeting. The July 5th meeting, many of you have.
I will, I will be out of town, Joe will be out of town shortly after that, so.
I'm gone.
Not that I'm all important, but.
I'm gone as well.
And you're gone as well.
I'm here, it's my birthday. I'd not be here.
Tom's birthday is one of the meetings.
We're people too, Tom.
What's the date?
July 5th.
Monday, July, Tuesday, July 5th.
Tuesday, July 5th.
I'd happily spend it here, but. The next meeting after that is the July 18th, that's actually the day I returned from being away, so I'll be here for that meeting. I might be a little bleary-eyed, but I'll be there for that meeting.
So food for thought, so next meeting, let's discuss, and I can't remember who I'm setting agenda with next, but let's try the.
Bill.
Hopefully not load up a huge agenda like we had tonight, but be able to distribute stuff in a manageable way to maybe eliminate that meeting, so.
The other, the other thing that you will have at the next meeting will be reappointments.
Oh, right, of all the new.
Right. Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn. To adjourn this eternal.
Second that, second that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, it's unanimous, thank you everybody for joining us, Ms. Bull, you online, we'll, we'll see you next.